Present.
Councilmember Fender.
Present.
Councilmember Robati.
Present.
Councilmember Rao.
Present.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson.
Present.
All council is present.
Thank you, sir. We will now have the indication by Councilmember Steve Rao.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry. This evening, my indication is in honor of the late Congressman John Lewis. Today, we come together in the diverse, inclusive town of Mooresville, a town which exemplifies the mosaic of America envisioned by American hero John Lewis, who now joins the pantheon of American patriots in heaven, watching over our nation as we face racial turmoil and a global pandemic. We pray this evening for the sick, those families who have lost loved ones, for the soldiers who defend our freedom, and for God to give us the strength and wisdom to live through these uncertain times. We are grateful that you share with us the fearless, courageous American hero John Lewis, whose march for equality was a marathon, not a sprint. It is not enough to remember that such a great man lived among us, and that he would go on to achieve great political achievements. We must remember how this hero lived. At each mile marker, he faced obstacles, imprisonment, beatings, and even almost losing his wife, life, on a bridge in Selma during the Bloody Sunday massacre, but never lost his sight on the finish line, a nation where all men and women are equal, regardless of their race and color of their skin. He fought for this cause every day with all his heart and soul until he took his last breath. We still have much work to do, many miles to go to get to that finish line, but we know he is watching over us. As in the words of Freddie Mercury, "The show must go on and will go on, and the fight for freedom will never die." It was Dr. Martin Luther King who said, "Darkness cannot drive out darkness, only light can. Hate cannot drive out hate, only love can." Let John Lewis be an everlasting reminder of this divine light, which lives in each of us, to be a hero, to make our community safe, our nation and world a better place. For if each of us today share this light of love and hope with the world, then we will never be in the dark. There will always be hope. There will always be freedom. I end this indication in the words of John Lewis himself, a few weeks ago, who said, "Do not let, get lost in a sea of despair. Be hopeful. Be optimistic." Our struggle is not the struggle of a day, a week, a month, or a year. It is the struggle of a lifetime. Never, ever be afraid to make some noise and get in good trouble, necessary trouble. May he rest in peace. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. All who are able, please stand and join in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are now at item five. Prior to further action, I will ask if there is a motion and second to invoke Rule 19 so we can participate remotely.
Make a motion to invoke Rule 19?
I have a motion from Mayor Pro Tem Johnson. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second from Councilmember Fender. Town Clerk, can you please do a roll call vote?
Councilmember Garamella. Councilmember Garamella.
Aye.
Councilmember Fender.
Aye.
Councilmember Robati.
Aye.
Councilmember Rao.
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Colley.
Aye.
The motion to invoke Rule 19 passes unanimously.
Thank you. Before you adopt tonight's agenda, Town Council policy is to review and ensure there are no conflicts of interest or appearance of conflict of interest with any items on the agenda. Do any council members have any such conflicts?
None.
Okay. Thank you. The Town Manager has requested the addition of a second closed session this evening to discuss economic development to be conducted in advance of the current closed session. If the motion to adopt tonight's agenda will please reflect that, we would appreciate it. Is there a motion to adopt tonight's agenda without amendment?
I'll make that motion with the addition of a closed session for economic development incentive.
Okay. I have a motion from Mayor Pro Tem Johnson.
I'll second.
I have a second from Councilmember Robati. Town Clerk Smith, will you please conduct a roll call vote?
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Rao.
Aye.
Councilmember Robati.
Aye.
Councilmember Fender.
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Colley.
Aye.
The motion to adopt the regular agenda with the addition of the second closed session passes unanimously.
Thank you, sir. There are four items on tonight's consent agenda. We had a very busy June, so there are four meeting minutes to be adopted on the consent agenda. Is there a motion and a second to adopt the consent agenda?
Make a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
I have a motion from Mayor Pro Tem Johnson.
Second.
I have a second from Councilmember Fender. Town Clerk Smith, we're getting used to going right to you.
Councilmember Fender.
Aye.
Councilmember Robati.
Aye.
Councilmember Rao.
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella.
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson.
Aye.
Mayor Colley.
Aye.
The motion to adopt the consent agenda passes unanimously.
Thank you, sir. We're skipping item eight. There are no items pulled from the consent agenda. On item nine, we have administrative reports. We have one administrative report this evening, the semi-annual records audit. Administrative reports are provided as information-only items unless council has questions. Are there any questions on this item? Okay, seeing nothing in person and nothing from our remote members. We will move on to item 10. Public comment. Town Clerk Smith will now present any public comments received.
Thank you, Mayor Colley. There were 17 total comments received for the public comment item. Fifteen included the required address, and I will read those now. The first from Lou Yurany, 502 Misty Grove Circle, Mooresville, North Carolina. "I want to recognize Jerry Allen and Kyle Cooper for their efforts over the last few weeks. Both Jerry and Kyle have met with the Capital Area Disc Golf League on two different occasions during after-work hours to research what it takes to establish a disc golf course. On the evening of 7/15/2020, about three hours were spent at the site of West Carey Disc Golf Park, which is currently under construction and entering the final stages. Then, on the evening of 7/22, about two more hours were spent walking the wooded portion of Mooresville Community Park to assess the feasibility of adding a nine-hole golf course in that space. I also want to thank Councilmember Vicki Scroggins-Johnson for adding an agenda item to the last Town Council meeting agenda for the purpose of clarifying how public comments are to be received. I was happy to hear that all Town Council members agree that there are no residential limitations to speakers addressing Town Council as long as a name and residential or business address, including the city, are provided. Mooresville is not only a place to live, it's a place to live, work, and play, and should be inviting to everyone." The next public comment is from Jeffrey Privet at 202 Howland Avenue, Carey, North Carolina. "Dear Town of Mooresville, while I am a 13-year resident of Carey, I have seen the growth of my neighboring town. I enjoy the ability to be able to drive 15 to 20 minutes and play a round of disc golf with friends, practice, or be involved with the sanctioned PDGA tournament in this great state and local Triangle area, which is quickly becoming one of the best places to play disc golf in the country. Recently, Raleigh was voted the 36th-best city to play disc golf in the United States. Charlotte was voted the third in the U.S., and there's a push to get Raleigh in the top five and beyond like our sister city, and it is fast approaching. Other cities in North Carolina were 31st, such as Greensboro or High Point, 31st Winston, 35th, I apologize, Winston-Salem, and 42nd Durham Chapel Hill. This is proof that the state of North Carolina is quickly becoming a staple destination for disc golfers. Adding your great city on top of the current and future courses in the area is going to bring the Raleigh area to the top. I feel with the continued growth of Mooresville, adding a disc golf amenity, as I have stated before, is fun for all ages. Many people still do, still don't know what disc golf is, however they use the park every day. Adding this fun and expensive sport is a great way to continue to get people outside to maintain their health and sense of wellness." The next comment is from Steve Lauderdale at 2104 Glade Valley Lane in Mooresville. "I want to share some publicly available facts about the Wake County Public School system. Wake County Public Schools utilize 990 trailers for temporary classrooms. Wake County has 20 CAPS schools. Three of the CAPS schools are base schools from Mooresville, Austin Ridge Elementary, Cedar Fork Elementary, and Panther Creek High. In addition to three CAPS schools, seven other base schools from Mooresville are operating at over 100% capacity: Carpenter Elementary School, Green Hope High School, Mooresville Elementary School, Northwoods Elementary School, Parkside Elementary School, Weatherstone Elementary School, and West Carey Middle School. Also, one calendar application school for Mooresville is operating at over 100% capacity, Green Hope Elementary School. So even with recent school openings, Mooresville residents have three CAPS schools and eight overcrowded schools. I want to address a part of the Mooresville's UDO that is not related to tonight's public hearing. I hope that council will take action to change the UDO requirements for temporary classrooms. According to Carey's Land Development Ordinance, Table 5.4.2, Carey does not require a use permit for temporary classroom facilities for schools. Carey only requires a site plan. That seems like a best practice that Mooresville should adopt. We need to send a positive and welcoming message to Wake County Public Schools and the Board of Education. This is also an opportunity to streamline our government and make it more efficient. Please change the UDO to exempt temporary classroom facilities from having a special use permit. Thank you." The next public comment from Becky Yurany, resident of Mooresville, 502 Misty Grove Circle, Mooresville, North Carolina. "I am writing to request that our town consider bringing disc golf to Mooresville. This is a sport that my family has started playing on the last few years, and it has become a huge part of our lives. It has provided much-needed exercise and has been a great way to get out into nature. We have so many wonderful amenities here, however, there are still some we do not have. I would love to not have to drive to another town to play. When we do play disc golf, we usually visit a local bar or restaurant after. I'm sure a lot of our businesses in our town could use the business since COVID has affected so many. My family and I have spent countless hours volunteering with the Capital Area Disc League to build golf courses in other communities, and we continue to do so in our town. I am also interested in shuffleboard and bocce ball courses as well. I know our town wants a dog park and other things as well. Why not consider all these amenities? Why wouldn't we want to be the town with the best?" The next comment is from Matthias Zertuch, 143 Garner Road, Raleigh, North Carolina. "I think disc golf would be a great addition to the Triangle area and especially the town of Mooresville. Disc golf is a family-friendly sport that is free to the community and cheap for the town to implement. Not only does it benefit the immediate community of Mooresville, but it also encourages visitors and tourists, which will provide revenue for the community. Much like there are public parks, there are home to recreational sports leagues, disc golf courses can be home to various tournaments, which attract players across the state and brings money into the town economy. I think disc golf should seriously be considered for the town of Mooresville, which currently has no place for local players to play, but seemingly has a plethora of every other recreational activity, especially dog parks, which are bountiful, unlike disc golf, a fast-growing and inspirational sport." The next comment is from Adam Creed, 100 Oak Hill Loop, Carey, North Carolina. "Dear council members, my name is Adam Creed. I am a former resident of Mooresville, now living down the road in Carey. I write today to encourage you to implement plans of a disc golf course in your Mooresville park. With the current pandemic, travel opportunities are limited and discouraged, causing individuals and families to seek outdoor opportunities closer to home. Due to this, there has been a significant increase in the interest of the sport of disc golf. Disc golf is a great way for small groups or individuals to enjoy a park while practicing appropriate social distancing, as well as a great place for large groups to gather in the future for fun events. Adding a disc golf course to your Mooresville park, particularly a beginner-friendly course such as an ACE place, would bring more people to the town of Mooresville who would not otherwise visit the town. It would also give individuals who work in RTP a reason to extend their time in Mooresville after work, increasing the chance that they also eat dinner or shop in the area. Ultimately, it is an opportunity for you, as our Town Council, to encourage the healthy and active lifestyle that we all need, particularly during, during this pandemic, by implementing Mooresville's first disc golf course. Thank you for your time and consideration. Adam Creed." The next public comment is from Bradley Kelso, 202 Howland, Carey, North Carolina. "I am emailing in request for your support in bringing disc golf to Mooresville. There is not another amenity that dollar-for-dollar affects and reaches so many people in a community. This will be such an addition to Mooresville. Please consider and help us bring disc golf to Mooresville. Bradley Kelso, U.S. Army retired." The next comment is from Helen Grant, 116 Cudrow Lane, Mooresville. "I would love to see a dog park added to the nature park plans at Highway 54 in Aviation. This spot is perfect because it, because it isn't highly residential. Thank you for all you do." The next comment is from Tim Moore, 1349 Legendary Lane, Mooresville, North Carolina. "I am a father-in-law and grandparent of my son-in-law and grandkids that live in Mooresville. We all love disc golf because it gets us all together and outside enjoying something we love doing, and it's free and mostly in the shade. As of now, we either head to Cornwallis Park in Durham or Kentwood Park in Raleigh, but it would be amazing if there was a disc golf course offered to us right here in Mooresville. Our youngest family member that plays is six years old, and she will be throwing better than me before long. I am 74 years old but plan on playing for many more years. It's like they say, a great walk in the park." The next comment is from Wesley Shim, 105 Park Hollow Court, Carey, North Carolina. "I live in Carey and work in Mooresville over in Perimeter Park. I live close enough to Mooresville to enjoy some of the parks and recreation amenities it offers, such as various public parks for walking, as well as soccer and cricket fields. It is unfortunate that the crush of recent commercial and residential development has left these types of green spaces so sparsely available and cramped within Mooresville. A disc golf course would be a lovely addition to town amenities, as it's a fantastic sport to draw newcomers into all physical abilities, and it gets us out, it gets us all out for much-needed exercise. It would be great to step out after a day at work and spend some time with coworkers for a quick round. I cannot think of a better place than Mooresville to be able to one day have town-sponsored intramural tournaments between employees at all the different companies that work in the area. Thank you for your consideration." The next comment is from Paul May, 209 Cambria Lane, Mooresville, North Carolina. "Town of Mooresville Town Council, as a new resident of Mooresville, I was excited to hear of the possibility of the town adding a disc golf course. Disc golf has a very low cost to originate and maintain over the years. Most courses require very little installation costs, especially with assistance from a larger volunteer disc golf community here in the Triangle. Field or court sports require higher installation costs and constant maintenance, even possible complete reconstruction over the years of their life. The sport can be played over a variety of ages from five to 80 years old, by individuals or in groups. It's favorably compared to a walk in the woods with skill and strategy added. A very healthy way to get outside and use parts of a park in small groups that can stay socially distant, thereby allowing more people to enjoy the outdoors. Please give strong consideration to this low-cost, low-maintenance outdoor activity that gives back to the community through volunteerism and tournament donations. Thank you for your consideration." The next comment is from Ian Kluggish, 1504 Laughridge Drive, Carey, North Carolina. "I am writing to share my support for a recreational disc golf facility in Mooresville. Disc golf is an affordable, accessible, fun outdoor activity that promotes community, volunteerism, healthy competition, and personal improvement. It is a great sport for all ages and athletic levels, and especially in these days, can be played with safe distance from other players or park visitors. Jay Pontier and the Capital Area Disc League have the full support of the local disc golf community, and we would all love to see a course in Mooresville where currently none exist. Thank you." The next comment is from William Higgins, 6709 Low Bush Court, Wilmington, North Carolina. "Hello. Although not a resident of Mooresville, I do my, I do find myself in the area often for family events and work. I would be thrilled if a new disc golf course was put in that area. Thank you for your consideration." The next comment is from Hillary Rich, 800 Walnut Woods Drive, Mooresville, North Carolina. "As you are aware, Mooresville residents have been asking for a dog park for quite a while. We know there is a large multimillion-dollar-one plan for 2024, however, that is too long to wait. Having a large dog park in a few years will be great. In the meantime, however, I'd like to ask that the Town Council consider creating smaller dog parks around the town on land already owned by the town within parks that already exist. For example, Northwest Park. This park has quite a large area of green space that is rarely, rarely used. I walk through that park every day and have only seen that space being used twice over the years. I have taken many pictures of the green space on different days and different times of the day to show the lack of uses of this space. These pictures have been forwarded to a member of Mooresville's Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Resources Advisory Committee. I'm asking the Town Council to consider building a dog park on half of this green space, just half. It's the perfect size for a smaller dog park. Even half of this space is large enough to be sectioned off into two separate areas, one for large dogs and one for smaller dogs. It doesn't need to be fancy. It just needs to have the basic dog park amenities like a fence, benches, poop bag stations, and a large sign with dog park rules. The preliminary research I've done shows that these kinds of smaller parks can be erected rather quickly for under $100,000. The private HOA dog park of Village Square at Amberly is a great example of the type of dog park that could work really well at Northwest Park. Other examples are the dog parks at the following apartment complexes: Bexley, Bexley at Panther Creek in West Carey, Brizio Apartments off Davis Drive in Durham, Cortland Apartments also off Davis Drive in Durham. They aren't fancy, but they are enclosed, which is really the most important part of any dog park. Dog owners just want to give their dogs the opportunity to run off the leash. Not everyone has a fenced-in backyard for such activities. It also has a wonderful, it also is a wonderful way to meet people within the community. Right now, there are three playgrounds less than 3/10 of a mile from each other. There is one at Northwest Park, the one at Parkside Valley Elementary, and the one right across the street from the school near Breckenridge Tennis Courts. Even though Breckenridge is a private community, there is nothing to stop anyone from using the playground. I'm pretty sure that if there was a census done for households within the one-mile radius of these playgrounds, you would find that overall, there are more dogs in these homes than playground-aged children. Suffice to say, we've got the kids more than covered. For many residents, their dogs are their children. Let's give those pups an area to run and play now, not four years from now. I truly believe having several, several smaller dog parks around the town would benefit more residents, and we wouldn't have to wait four years to do it. Thank you for consideration." The next public comment is from Johnny Stover, 406 Kings George Loop, Carey, North Carolina. "I am interested and support any motion to build a disc golf course within the town of Mooresville." There were two additional public comments that did not include an address as, that did not include an address as requested, and these comments requested a disc golf course to be developed within the town of Mooresville. All the public comments were provided in their entirety to council and will be added to the public record.
Thank you, sir. So to review, at our last meeting, we determined that we will read verbatim those that include a name and address moving forward. So we look forward to continuing to receive public comment in that way until we're able to safely have people in person. We are now at item 11, public hearing. There are two public hearing items on tonight's agenda: a resolution authorizing a proposed amendment of the land use plan and zoning map for 101 Holly Creek Road in consideration of text amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance related to process changes. Chris Lawson, Planner 2, will facilitate the first item, a resolution authorizing a proposed amendment to land use plan and zoning map for 101 Holly Creek Road. Council was previously briefed on this item at their March 10 meeting and will be asked to take action on August 11. Mr. Lawson?
Doesn't sound like it. All right, let's try now. It's not working? All right. Okay, so I'm trying to load my PowerPoint, but good evening, council. Tonight is the public hearing scheduled, but since it's been so many months since you were first briefed on this, I thought I'd run back through a quick brief. I'm going to try to go quickly, but if you have any questions, please refer to stop me, and I'll try to cover anything you have questions about. So again, this is rezoning at 101 Holly Creek Road. The request is to change the land use plan and the zoning map from very low-density residential to conditional neighborhood activity center. If you see on the map, the subject parcel is outlined in red. This is an aerial from earlier this year, and it shows kind of some of the other development going on around this site. This is another aerial just zoomed out. Again, the subject parcel is outlined in red. This is the current zoning map of the area. The request is to rezone to the Neighborhood Activity Center, which is outlined in the pink color. So you can kind of see closer to the intersection of Davis Drive and Mooresville Carpenter Road. It's kind of the, the center of Neighborhood Activity Center in that area. So I keep going through my presentation. This is just some basic information.
Hey, we can't see the presentation.
Chris, you clicked on through the link, which I think might be the issue.
Oh.
We're working on that now, Councilmember Garamella.
I can see the presentation now.
Okay, I'll, I'll run back through real quickly then. Again, this is a second brief and the public hearing for rezoning of 101 Holly Creek Road. Basically, the, the parcel's outlined in red here. The request is to rezone to the Conditional Neighborhood Activity Center. Again, the parcel is outlined in red. This is another zoomed-out aerial showing the area around 101 Holly Creek Road. This is the current zoning map. Again, parcel's outlined in red. The request is to rezone to the NAC zoning district, which is represented by that pink color on the rest of the map. Here's some basic property information. It was the site of a single-family home, which has now been demolished. Here's some proposed uses. The first slide is about use restrictions. They're the same as last time you saw them, but I will note, two were added, letters M and N. And the highlight here is that townhomes would no longer be in allowed use if you were to approve this rezoning. The second slide is about conditions related to access. These have not changed since you saw them last time. Basically, the highlight here is a payment allude to build a right-turn lane on Mooresville Carpenter Road onto Davis Drive North, and then a cross-access easement granted to the western parcel, which is currently a single-family home. And then the final slide on conditions, just a few other ones, size limitations, an expanded landscape buffer that normally would be required. Listed here are some expected traffic impacts based on various uses. These numbers are provided by the Town's Transportation Planner to give council an idea of potential traffic impacts of various uses. This is a new slide I added based on some comments council provided last time about trying to understand what kind of transportation improvements would be required. So there's three main bullet points. The top one deals with payment alludes. That, that basically means the developer is going to pay the town a certain amount of money, and future development will happen by the town once we accumulate enough money to, to those improvements. The middle one deals with Holly Creek Road, so Holly Creek Road would have to be expanded by five feet, add a curbing gutter, and then also add a sidewalk. And that's just along with the subject parcel, not along the entire Holly Creek Road. And then the, the third bullet point is about Davis Drive. Again, they'll have to add a third 12-foot southbound lane. They'll have to add curb and gutter and a 10-foot side path, which is just a large sidewalk. So staff does recommend approval of both requests to amend the land use plan and the zoning map to Conditional Neighborhood Activity Center. The Planning and Zoning Board in February recommended approval by a vote of 4 to 1. And then, so you were briefed back, I think, in March. Tonight is the scheduled public hearing. It's scheduled to take action at your next meeting, however, that can be continued at your discretion. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them right now. We also have the applicant here tonight, and I believe a few speakers on the public hearing itself. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lawson. So we have some public hearing speakers. We generally do those first, but if any council has any questions first for Mr. Lawson, we can entertain those. Councilmember Rao? Councilmember Row.
Chris, we said that we restricted townhomes as part of this, but what about, that doesn't include multifamily, correct? So, we could still have multifamily built?
So, let me go back to that slide. Now, so multifamily is letter A, so that would still be restricted. And then, based on some of council's comments last time, the applicant decided to include townhomes as a restricted use also, so.
So, to be clear, townhomes and multifamily are restricted?
Correct.
As part of this reasoning?
Correct.
Okay. I have no further questions at this time.
Okay. I don't see any questions from our remote participants. Mayor Pro Tim Johnson.
Actually, just to be clear, Chris, those are the only two changes since March 10th, when we reviewed this the last time?
Let me take a second. Those are the two use limitations that were added based on, I believe, neighbors' comments and based on just some concerns I think council had about maybe higher-density residential uses. I believe that is the only change. Applicant, can you help me out? Yes, it was. Okay, those are the only two changes since the last time you saw the application, so.
Seeing no others, if we could have Assistant Manager Zudima bring forward the first public hearing speaker. If you could state your name, address, and any role for the meeting, and you'll have three minutes, sir.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Steve Lauderdale. I live at 2104 Blade Valley Lane in Morrisville, so I'm a resident of Morrisville. I'm here tonight to let you know that I'm opposed, opposed to the proposed amendment to the land use plan and zoning map for 101 Holly Creek Road. The Holly Creek neighborhood is designated very low-density. I suggest keeping 101 Holly Creek as very low-density until the entire land use plan is reviewed and updated, including determining the future designation for all of the properties in the Holly Creek neighborhood. I think a better use of the Holly Creek neighborhood would be a Wake County Public School. In that regard, it has been publicly reported by town staff that Wake County Public Schools looked at Holly Creek and found it unsuitable. Unfortunately, fortunately, that information is not correct. Holly Creek may not be suitable for a clone of a large school like Parkside. However, Wake County Public Schools has not yet determined if Holly Creek might be suitable for a small footprint school. I have this information from a school board member as of Friday, so it is not correct that Wake County Public Schools has ruled out this land. You may recall that in March 2018, the town council had a special meeting with Board of Education members to discuss small footprint schools. There's a link about it on the town website. According to the meeting minutes, quote, "Council members expressed their appreciation and emphasized their primary interest in reducing barriers and finding best-case scenarios for Morrisville for new schools." Council expressed that Morrisville has shown the willingness to be a model of new ideas and dynamic means of meeting resident needs," end quote. So, they have not ruled out a small footprint school. Since the school at Holly Creek is still a possibility, I strongly recommend not approving this request for 101 Holly Creek. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Assistant Manager Zudima will now bring in the next speaker, keeping social distance and safety for everybody. If you could state your name, address, and any role you might have in the community, sir.
Sure. Hello, I'm Mark Dixon. I'm at 1413 Everett Fields Road here in Morrisville, and I am a member of the Morrisville Public Education Advisory Committee, but I'm not speaking on behalf of that group tonight. I'm just speaking on behalf of myself, resident.
You'll have three minutes. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. So, I've seen a lot of growth in Morrisville since I moved here 10 years ago. Morrisville will always be a place where people want to live due to its proximity to RTP. However, the rapid growth may not have been comprehended, may not have comprehended the number of students who will need a school to attend. I understand that there's been dialogue between Wake County Public Schools and the Planning Department, but it seems that there will be, there will still be a demand for more seats. I would like to have the town council consider one last time if Wake County Public Schools would like to provide a creative solution for schooling, the schooling need. Holly Creek Road remains one of the last large plots of land left to have an educational facility, and I'd just like to see if there's anything that Wake County can do to provide this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And Assistant Manager Zudima is indicating that there are no other public hearing speakers lined up. That is correct. Okay. So, at this time, if we have, do the applicants wish to speak at this time, or?
Yes, sir.
Okay. If you want to call.
I believe you have some that were received by email as well.
By email, okay. I'd like to recognize Town Clerk Smith to read the ones that we received via email. Thank you for Town Manager Page.
There were two public comments received for the public hearing item 11A. The first public hearing comment was from Peter Pritchard, 119 Holly Creek Road, Morrisville. "I am Peter Pritchard. I live on Holly Creek Road, and I'm a 23-plus-year resident of this wonderful town that I am proud to call home. I don't generally enjoy public speaking, but have I wished the circumstances would allow me to address you in person tonight. I know we all hope that better and safer days will come soon. Concerning the application to change the LUP designation and the zoning of 101 Holly Creek Road, it's easy to categorize submittals in a public hearing or public comment session as for, or against, or pro versus con. However, I can't say that I'm enthusiastically in favor of the rezoning of 101 Holly Creek, nor am I fiercely opposed to it. Rather, I see it as inevitable and, yes, natural step in the evolution of this area. Across the street from 101, you can see the development of Wegmans and not just Wegmans, but the surrounding retail and service establishments and the large apartment blocks across from Holly Creek. Soon, there will be apartments between 101 and Food Line. The large savon development is taking place to the west, and the town of Cary has approved general business zoning. For example, a Sheetz gas station just north, just to the north, and a multi-story development to replace the soccer center between Holly Creek and McCrimmon. It is natural that Holly Creek be redeveloped. Planning staff will rightly point out that the item before you tonight is specifically for 101 Holly Creek, but I ask that you take into account the total context that you will be asked to consider when the draft land use plan comes before you later this year. Consider the overall Holly Creek area, approve this application, and support the residents and the planning board's desire for the whole of Holly Creek to be designated NAC in the land use plan. That's the best way to promote a thoughtful, desirable development rather than a ragged, bit-by-bit, piecemeal development. Thank you for your consideration, Peter." The second comment received for this public hearing item was from Elizabeth and Kevin O'Connor, 101 Henby Ridge Lane, Town of Morrisville. "We are writing to request that town council members vote against the rezoning of approximately 5.5 acres of property located at 101 Holly Creek Road from very low-density residential to Conditional Neighborhood Activity Center, as rezoning it as this classification could allow more high-density residential units to be built, first at this location and then soon afterward on more parcels along Holly Creek, at a time when Wake County Public Schools is struggling to keep up with the unbridled growth in this area. We are not against growth, but we believe growth needs to be responsible. It is not responsible at this point to rezone any more land in Morrisville from very low or even low or medium density until Wake County Public Schools can accommodate the current population. At the very least, before you vote, we would request the town to reach out to Wake County Public Schools for an impact statement on the potential effect to area schools, school kids, and school assignments. Should this rezoning now or even later lead to more high-density residential units? Thank you for your thoughtful consideration and ensuring responsible growth." All the public comments, public hearing comments were provided to council in their entirety and will be included in the public record.
Thank you, sir. So, we've received the emails, the in-person, and now we'd love to hear from the applicant. If you could, you could sit there and use that, or you can go up to the mic. It's up to you.
Do have a presentation, so.
Okay. Name, address, and role, please, sir.
So, if I could just, I'm sorry, we were not prepared for anyone other than Chris to be at the podium, so if we could get somebody to at least sanitize in that area.
I got different instructions.
Is the PowerPoint queued up to present on Teams?
Quick, you just view and just scroll through the site. Okay. That is the applicant's presentation.
Just want to see the site plan.
Thank you.
Just that?
And then, yeah, we need a couple pictures after that, too.
Okay, if you'll just tell me when to, I can just switch to the light if that's.
It's webbed now between the people. If you don't mind that.
Yeah, absolutely.
We appreciate your flexibility as we work through this.
So, Matthew Carpenter, 1324 Dillon Hall Court, Raleigh. I'm the attorney for the property owner, Jay Johnson and Steve Stroud, and thanks for hearing this again. I know it's been a long time. I think March was the last time that you heard about this case, and so I will just touch on the high points to kind of remind you what it's about. We were aiming to develop the property for a two-story medical office building, and so there will be no residential uses, and so hopefully that will obviate some of the concerns about added density there and the effect on the school system. We're seeking an NAC designation, which is consistent with properties along Davis Drive. Like Chris touched on, there's the Wegmans Shopping Center across the road, and there's also the apartment building to the south of us that's currently in site plan review. You can see on the sketch plan, the general building footprint that we envision, obviously, this will be more detailed at site plan. And we've added some buffers at the north, a 20-foot buffer at the request of the Changs who live on the other side of Holly Creek Road. And although it's not directly relevant to this request, I did want to say that we are in support of the neighbors' request, the neighbors that live along Holly Creek Road to have their property designated as NAC. We think that that would be a, you know, create a uniform development plan for the neighborhood, and that our property could kind of be the start of that. And so, I'd like, I'd like Jay, the developer, to speak a little bit about his experience, and we've got a couple pictures to show you, too, so.
Thank you, Matthew. My name is Jay Johnson. I live at 1436 Ridge Road in Raleigh, and Matthew has explained a lot, and I know you guys have heard about this process, this application, a few times. After hearing all the conversation, I think we'll just do a disc golf course there instead, because that seems to be a big need right now. Thank you for your time and consideration tonight. First, I'd like to just say that this parcel is located in a very commercial kind of area of this town, up in in this area for, since 1975, and have developed here. I think I mentioned this before, our Town Hall Commons down here where the Chamber of Commerce is currently, so have a little history, you know, in this area and good rapport with the town through the years. We envisioned this site as a medical site. I'm not sure that we can cure the school problem with our 5.5 acres, and I'm not sure that would be the place that I would put a school, and I know that's not up to me. But I will say that we've tried to do everything the right way here to bring our petition forward, listening to staff, listening to planning board, responding to those comments, and pursuing the NAC zoning as we were led to believe would be the best path for this use, and we still agree with that ourselves. We also went to the extent to meet all of our neighbors. We're not a merchant developer. We build properties and typically keep them. We do mostly medical. So, usually where we go, people are pretty happy to see us put in medical facilities and bring those uses, you know, close to home, because that's where people go. They don't want to drive any further than they have to for medical care. We would be contributing to all of the road improvements here. We will increase the tax base. We'll bring high-paying jobs to help support the medical needs of the community that are, that is growing quickly. So, these are all very positives, and I honestly can't think of another use that would be better for that corner or lower intensity and lower impact on your, the multi-housing, you know, the housing kind of concerns that are out there. Can't think of one that fits to build better than this in my career. I understand that there are differing opinions, and we heard a couple tonight we'd never heard before. I also have two letters of support from neighbors who live within the community that I'll submit into your information. We, we've placed many, many restrictions on this site. As an owner, it's very dangerous for us to put this many restrictions, because if we do get approval, then obviously, it's kind of hard to change your mind, because hardly anything could go there except for medical, office, medical. That's about it. No C-store, no convenience stores, no kennels, no nightclubs, no multifamily, no townhomes. So, we've tried to address everything. We think we're a great fit. I hope I can get your support for it. We've got a great track record of a lot of other properties in the area where we haven't left any dead bodies behind. We've tried to do everything we promised to do, and I think we'd be a great addition to your community. So, I thank you again for your time, and if you have any questions for me or either of us, Brandon here is our site planner, then feel free to ask, and thank you again for this time to speak with you. Hope I didn't run over.
No, you're good. Are you still up? Does anyone up here have any questions for the applicant? Councilmember Abadi.
Hi, I don't know if you can speak to this, but I would like to know your opinion of these, of the entirety of the Holly Creek area, your opinion of the suitability of that whole parcel, all the houses, for a medical complex of some type.
That's an excellent question. So, Councilperson Abadi, a lot of things that are considered when you develop a property, and one of them is the terrain. I think the Wake County Public School ran into the issue of there are a lot of streams in there. There are some wetland-oriented type areas. Our site, in fact, which we currently own, has 5.5 acres and I would say probably an acre and a half or two-acre pond on it, which we have gotten approved to, for Corps of Engineers has given us approval to drain the pond, and there's no wetlands. It's a really big tract of land. It's probably 55, 60 acres in there. There's a lot of unsuitables in there. As far as medical, I think that it has to grow and keep up with the demand. It'll, it'll take a lot of demand to fill 60,000 square feet of users, and we've reached out to other property owners and let them know that we have an interest in continuing to grow and purchase other properties and do it. It would take a super-large developer, I think, not one from around here, to develop something that large, and it would be a very, very big impact on traffic, be a very, very big impact on your, on your density, just to have that much happen at one time. As you can see, the Wegmans was huge, but not a lot overnight, you know, there. So, I would say that it's somewhat suitable for a medical office park. I can't... I couldn't foresee the entire, every single parcel being developed, but it has more potential than what we're offering. We've met some of the neighbors who are zoned NAC beside of our park, who also have interest in the same things we do, taking a couple of the owners along the front and starting to work our way back to do more in terms of what we do. So it's a, it's a good use. It just has to be the right timing. I think the timing for this size is past due. I think it's ready now for medical needs here. But I think it's, it would be a very slow process. The NAC zoning is important, I think, and I stand with the neighbors as well. I think it's important for that area, and the mayor, I remember he mentioned that he felt the whole area, he would, we'd like to see that kind of developed in a similar kind of way, and I agree with that. Whether it could all be medical, a little tougher.
Okay, thank you.
I hope that helps. It's a tough question.
Councilmember Rau, please.
One concern I would have is just, you know, there's so much uncertainty right now about the office market. We just don't know during the COVID era or post-COVID whether there's going to be demand for more offices. So that's just one thing I would want to sort of research out there, just so council sort of knows what's coming, because at least from a commercial perspective, a lot of businesses are doing more remote. So I don't know whether that's going to be less office, just in the market in general. The other, not really concerned, but, and this may be a question for staff as well, is we're not allowing townhomes or multifamily, but would single-family detached still be allowed? Because I, or would it not be?
No.
No, okay.
No housing of any kind, no residential of any kind.
No residential of any kind, okay. Because I've heard a couple of references about density, and so, you know, it just, I guess the concern is, would we be giving up an option of a kind of a small footprint school on 5.5 acres or not, which is, I guess, something that was brought up tonight. That's the first I've heard of that.
I just don't know how you'd even park it or circulate. It seems way too small of a school, but that's just my perspective.
Okay.
Did any of the remote participants want to chime in or have any comments or questions? I'm looking right beyond you, sir. Okay, seeing none there. Councilmember Fender?
I have a couple of questions. What's the percentage of tree canopy on this parcel of land?
I'll probably let, is that for me? I may let Brandon address it, but it's very low because of the pond takes up so much area, but.
Yeah, that's, that's correct. There's a large pond. Brandon Moore from 1111 Overland Road in Raleigh. Yeah, there's a large pond on the site, in the middle of the site, that is non-jurisdictional. So there's not a real forest canopy over most of it, and it was a residential property with, you know, gardens and such. And so I don't think preserving the trees was ever really a factor here. It was probably a farm back before that residence moved in.
It was.
But on the back side of the property, we're looking at doing our tree preservation on the, I guess, the southwest side next to the residence, because that is one of the areas that has good-sized trees still left, so.
What percentage of trees are you going to keep?
Are going to keep? I believe it's, we're going to meet the code requirement. It's 10% conservation.
Well, the exact percentage, as far as what's required by the UDO, it would be harder to determine without knowing the percentage you have right now. So I couldn't give you the square footage tonight, but it varies depending on how many trees exist on a property. Just a rough estimate, somewhere in the teens of what's there now will have to be preserved per the UDO. I don't have a specific number off the top of my head without a more detailed.
Specific tree conservation plan as part of the zoning.
Okay. What is the square footage of the office building you're looking at building?
This building would be 60,000 feet, and that's, that's the maximum allowed in the NAC zoning, on two levels.
And do you have potential tenants now?
We have prospects, but we're not marketing the building. We did, we thought it was not appropriate to market the project until we had approvals, just so that we didn't promise something we couldn't deliver.
All right. And I wanted to clear up something that Councilmember Rau said, and something that was mentioned about the 5.5 acres. The footprint of the school is not intended to just be on the 5.5 acres. The Wake County School Board has looked at, like, as some of the neighbors have wanted, developing that whole subdivision together, which equals about 45, 40, 45 acres. So the intent would not be putting a school on 5.5 acres.
It would be part of the total, it would be part of the total.
Yeah, right.
Thank you.
I think that's all I have right now.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from the council? Okay. I, I'm a little concerned that although it's a good use, I'm not sure if it's the right use for the town at this time for a lot of the reasons mentioned. Not only because it might be appropriate for a school, we're also short on parks for our town. So this, the land use plan is in the midst of being updated right now. So I'm not sure what the council feels about moving forward, but we will be looking at this again on the 11th. We did have an email from a resident and some other concerns about being unaware of the public hearing. It was noticed correctly and everything. Is the council interested in continuing the public hearing for the 11th to make sure we hear from all the residents who are interested, or would we like to close it tonight? I'm hearing, keep it open from Councilmember Rau, thoughts?
Yeah, I'd like to keep it open because.
Okay.
Residents weren't aware that.
Councilmember Robati?
I, I think it's important that all the residents be able to be heard. I think that there are a lot of issues in reaching out to the residents just because of the situation that we're in right now. So I do think that it's important that we give, I mean, they certainly know now. So I think that if we keep the public comment open until the next meeting, that's fine. Just, I would be interested to know if anyone has a feel for whether we'd receive some clarification from the Wake County Public School System on their plans between now and then also.
I think that's something we could ask staff to look into further.
Because I don't think it's fair to continue this matter indefinitely either. Those are my thoughts.
Okay. I'd love to hear from Councilmember Shroggin Johnson remotely, please.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I think that I am okay with closing the public hearing. This is a typical rezoning. We've had this publicized. We've had to delay this rezoning hearing due to the pandemic. And so there has been ample time to consider it, discuss it, socialize it, and so forth. If the council decides to extend the public hearing until the next meeting, we also will be having a quasi-judicial hearing, so there's some time consideration for that. The other issue is I would like to hear from our public regarding having another medical facility in the town of Morrisville. Personally, I have been wanting a medical facility that is more than an urgent care for many, many years. We have to go to Durham, or Cary, or Raleigh to get specialist services. So we are very underserved in the specialist area for medical facilities. So I saw this project as a very good win for our town to have services that are nearby. I do also respect and understand the need for school, but we really need to also look at our medical coverage for the increasing population that we have in this area. So thank you.
Yeah, adequate medical services is a very important quality-of-life issue. I was wondering, does Councilmember Garamella or Mayor Prette want to weigh in before we have seconds for some people?
No.
No? Councilmember Fender, please.
Yeah, I was debating about whether to bring this up tonight or if we were going to end up extending it the next meeting, but I have a couple of slides I wanted to share with the town council that Eric is going to bring up. So I remember talking a long time ago about the potential for a medical office in this spot and whether there was a need for it or not. So I did a little bit of research in what is out there currently. And the map that you see on the screen shows 101 Holly Creek is the red cross symbol in the, that's shown there. And then the others are showing other medical office buildings within five miles of that building. And can you go to the other slide? So one thing that probably, well, it's opened up in January of this year, is the UNC Healthcare at Panther Creek, and that's 2.9 miles away from this building. And I was looking at their website, and it's pretty much a small hospital, as well as the Wake Med West Cary that's 3.9 miles. So I'm not going to read through all of these, but these are the current medical office buildings that are within five miles of this location, which includes urgent care, primary care, women's health and care. If you go to the next slide, the UNC Healthcare Panther Creek, that lists all the different specialties that are available at UNC Healthcare, so at the Panther Creek location, which is technically Cary, but it's just three miles from this location. And so I think the landscape or the environment of the availability of medical offices has changed radically just within the past year or two. I also did not mention the medical facility, they're calling that the Triangle Women's Center right now, that was just built on McCrimmon beside the Church of Latter Day Saints, and that's 1.3 miles from 101 Holly Creek. In addition, there's two pediatric offices that are .4 miles from this location. So I just think the, the environment has changed radically in the past year. We have a plethora of medical office buildings surrounding us. And given that, I mean, originally when you guys came forward with this, I had no problem whatsoever with, you know, the medical office building being here. But after finding out from the school board members that there is still some potential of making the entire Holly Creek subdivision into a school, which we so desperately need in Morrisville, I do not want to give up that chance for another medical office building. You know, otherwise, I would, I would have no issue with this whatsoever. Something else I was going to say, and now it has eluded me. I guess, I guess that's it, is I don't want to give up that chance of the potential of putting a school in this location. I know, I know what I was going to say. You know, when I was, during the campaign, I studied the town of Morrisville map in-depth and looked at every parcel of land that's undeveloped out there. And really, the only two spots that we have in the town of Morrisville is Holly Creek and then along the McCrimmon extension, which is under the airport overlay, which pretty much puts building a school there out of play. So given that, Holly Creek is the only place left within the town of Morrisville to put a school. And everyone I talked to, parents and family in Morrisville, want a school we desperately need. We have trailers that we're trying to deal with, too. So that's where I'm at with this.
Mayor Prette Johnson, please.
So there are a couple, a couple of things to, to think about. I appreciate the, the map Councilmember Fender shared with the number of medical facilities surrounding us. That, that's really important to factor in. I think it's also important, though, to factor in how easy or not it is to get appointments in those facilities, just because they exist. I am not, I don't know what the demand is. So I don't know how, you know, clearly there's a need for medical facilities, otherwise we wouldn't have seen all those that are on that map. And whether they're available to all our residents or not, that's a whole nother question. Just because there are, you know, 10 of them or 12 of them, I don't know whether that's sufficient for this area or for this population or not. So that, that really is the, the bigger question that if we're going to go down that road has to be answered. And I'm not sure that's for us to investigate and to answer, but just to kind of mull on, I guess. So there's that. You know, a community that's a desirable place to live needs to have many amenities and needs to have many facilities for its residents. And schools, no doubt, are right up there. They absolutely are right up there. You know, for years, we have worked with the school board so that they knew what, what our development patterns were here in the town. And for years, they had the opportunity to buy any piece of land they wanted, and they chose not to. That does not mean they have not changed their ways. We, as we heard from one of our residents who commented tonight, there is now this desire for maybe a small footprint school, whereas for years, that was not even considered. So, so I think the whole school issue is really important to understand, but there's a lot of conflicting information out there. Eddie Parker was here and spoke to our Morrisville Education Committee earlier this year, I believe. I think that was in January or February. And I was at that meeting, and she did not indicate that there was a desire to look at any property here in Morrisville. So if that has changed, they need, and not just school board members, but we need to hear from Wake County staff, and we need to hear immediately, because I think it is incredibly unfair to hold any property owner hostage for what might be down the road in the future. I, I think that, that is, that is, that is unfair, especially when the opportunity has been there. This particular neighborhood and this particular street has been talked about as a school site for years. So, you know, I would like to have some clarification there, because I am not aware of a school board member, and I hear it's one member now, who has said that they're interested in this piece of property. And that, that, I'm sorry, that's, that's not enough. I need to hear, I need to hear some really good information from, from the school board. So I agree with Councilmember Robati. We need to get that clarified and get that clarified pretty darn quickly. And I would, I'm going to be really honest. I talked to Matthew, reached out, I think, to all of us over the last couple of weeks, and he and I had a conversation, and I was honest, saying I'm very conflicted about what to do with this piece of property, because I do think that it, it will lay that first, that first brick in the path to what's to come. And, and I would feel better having a better, solid understanding about what we're going to do in this whole area. But having said that, this piece of property backs up to Davis Drive, which is a four-lane divided median road. divided median road that has a senior facility across the street in the town of Cary. That apartment complex is a 55 and over apartment building that would be, this is a great complement to that. There's also Wegmans. And quite frankly, and you heard in the presentation tonight, the town of Cary intends to do some additional changes in this vicinity, especially in the in the property just north of Holly Creek Residential Properties. You heard about a Sheetz gas station. There are some changes still to come in this area. So this particular parcel and where it is up on Davis Drive, probably this is a good fit, a medical facility, an office building. But like I said, I'm very conflicted because I I too wish we had a better understanding. I wish I understood, I wish I understood where council was headed in this area, in this neighborhood. That would help me decide what to do here. But that's, I'm not sure we're going to get get those answers. But anyhow, that's all my comments right now. I appreciate the comments from the public. I too think we could close the hearing. I'm OK with that. This applicant has been waiting now for months. And we, quite frankly, and I will say me, I have not wanted to have the building, this room open to the public. The last couple of months, it has been a safe place to come, and that has felt good. So the minute we start opening up again, it's, you know, there's some risk involved in that. So we have, and I will put that blame on me, I have wanted to wait, too. So I think if the die is cast, we need to give these folks an answer and not hold them, hold them hostage, quite frankly.
Thank you. We have not yet heard from Councilmember Garamella, so I'll recognize him, and then Councilmember Robati, please.
I agree with what Liz is saying, because this, if it is a medical facility that they're trying to build, they might have done all the research, because they're building a 60,000 square feet facility, and without their due diligence, they would not keep their money on it. And we don't know what the needs are. If it doesn't work, it doesn't work, you know? But bottom line is, I agree, there's a lot of inconsistency, because Betty Parker is rock solid. When she says something, she usually sticks to it. So I don't know how, one council member, which I, we didn't get any email, we didn't hear anything to say that there could be a possibility. So it just doesn't make any, you know, the whole thing doesn't work out, because I was, I heard the meeting where Brad West clearly said that they have looked into it, and they said it was not good. And so when I have those two data points, you know, telling the same story, and then one school member saying otherwise, without a concrete evidence, that needs to be clarified. But I agree, we should not hold this person hostage. It was long due, especially at the time when COVID hit, and they were pretty patient with us, because we said we will open up for them when the time is appropriate. And so I agree, like, you know, the public hearing could be easily closed, because this is not like coming, this was, this has been going on for a long time. So that's my two cents.
Thank you, Councilmember Garamella. Councilmember Robati?
Yeah, so I'm not going to lie, I do really want a medical building. I think that one area in which this community is particularly underserved is the availability of behavioral and mental health physicians, and that concerns me and has always concerned me as a resident. However, I, there's a giant townhouse development going up literally right behind Holly Creek. I I don't know what else is going to happen on the Wegmans site, but I have some real concerns about where these people are going to go to school. You know, we're building townhouses in our own town. Where are these kids going to go to school? I, you know, if we build, even if we build a medical building on this property that we're discussing tonight, if there's still 45 acres back there, I would like to think that we could figure out something for a school. But I I am really concerned about the about the the rising houses, the rising, the number of caps. I think it was Mr. Lauderdale that referenced the the percentages of overflow in our schools. And that that is deeply concerning, and we've got to get a handle on this, because we can't, we can't control what Cary builds on our borders. But we have to figure out where the kids that live in Morrisville are going to go to school. And, you know, that's that's Wake County Public School System's job, but it's it's also our job. So, you know, that is, that's something that I'm concerned about. I I think we really do need, I think that the the Wake County Public School System either has to be in or out at this point, you know? So I think that we should get some clarification on where they stand, and then, you know, it's possible, I think we could have both. I can't imagine why that wouldn't work, but we need to know what they're doing. So, you know, you could indulge us for another two weeks, that would be great, from my, from my standpoint.
I recognize Planning Director Stiegel.
So just to provide a little bit of additional background regarding the school issue, we were in communication with Betty Parker, particularly about this area, a couple months back, and they indicated it didn't work for a high school. But in terms of an elementary or middle school as well, they cited some access concerns and some environmental issues that made the property problematic. We're happy to circle back to see if anything has changed. It had been a couple months since we've talked to them, particularly about this area. We could do that.
If you would do that, Michelle, I think that would provide a lot of clarity on this situation.
I believe there is council consensus to circle back with Wake County Schools, and please get a little information on that behalf for us, please. I guess a question would be also if, given the initial sketch plan, it has their entrance to the side road, would that be problematic for carpooling or anything like that? So that would be the next question. Would this make it even more problematic as a site? As we know, Parkside was a problematic site for many years, and that's now a school. So things can be overcome when the needs become greater, the trade-offs happen. So I I would like to extend the public hearing. I appreciate the patience that the applicant has had, and knowing that they're going to have to bring people back again for that. We apologize, these are extraordinary times, but we, I think there's a desire to hear from more of the residents. We've touched on a couple of different things here, needs for medical facilities for the town, schools, things like that. I want to make sure our residents feel fully heard. That's very important, and it's been a little problematic to make sure everyone's aware of what's going on, given these changing circumstances in our procedures. So we're going to continue the public hearing. We have four people who want to do that. So the public hearing will be continued through the 11th, at least, and we may or may not take action on the 11th. That will be up to the council. I'll now recognize Councilmember Rao. And just comment?
Just one last point. I mean, for me, I like the benefit of a medical facility, so I clearly wouldn't want to deny the citizens that, but it is important for me to know that we're not limiting our options with schools before I make this decision. So whatever the staff can do to find out, because tonight, you know, comments were made that there are options on the table, certain people have talked to a school board member, I want to know what it is, you know, because now it's out there in the public that there's an option for a school. And I just want to make sure that that is clarified as soon as we can, so that we can make a decision, because that would be an important factor for us to consider. And the last thing I would want to do is to base a decision on something that either isn't viable at all, you know, so there's no, no school, whatever, but I want to hear from Betty Parker, from a school board member. I want to, I want, I don't want to hear it from another citizen. I want to hear whatever you all have to do. I hate to ask you for doing additional things, but I do think we need to get that answer as soon as we can before we make a decision on this matter, based on what what comments have been made tonight. Thank you.
Does staff have direction of what we're asking?
Yes, we could circle back with Betty Parker, start with her, and just see if anything has changed in this area.
OK. Thank you. And I'd also say that I am also concerned that we are short on park space, and once again, this is one of the few places left that might work for that, or just our entire land use plan, it's still in in the works. So there's been some desire to make sure that this is all done cohesively, even though this is just a single rezoning, that's just something for our entire council to keep in mind as we move forward. OK? Any closing thoughts, Mr. Lawson, applicants, anything you'd like to share at this time?
Anything, Jay? Sure, I never miss an opportunity to speak.
You have 20 minutes.
I appreciate your thoughtful comments, the ones that may fare better for us than some that may not. That's good, the public is more important. I think we can chew gum and walk at the same time. I think at Wake County Public Schools, after many, many, many years of waiting on them, they've had more than enough opportunities, and we've heard similar rumblings, and none of which are confirmed. And I think, Steve, you're right, we need to find out exactly, you know, where they stand, so that we, we no longer have to wait on Wake County Public Schools. I think there's a way to marry both, like Councilmember Robati said. One point about the medical use, though, too, and when you look at those graphics, I said it myself, you know, I'm paying these people to do tons of research, and they're doing great jobs, and I get stacks of paper with need and existing tenants and tenants that want to come from that spot to us. We just developed two buildings in Cary right across from Wake Med Hospital. There are literally hundreds of practices within two miles of there, and there's still demand. So it can be misleading, and I definitely get your point. We don't want to build it if they're not out there, if the needs are not there. But we, we've learned, some of those people on that list, their waiting times are two months to get in, and so they're having to expand to other locations to take them in our Clayton place or to take them in our Cary place. So I just want to make that point, too, that we are also always concerned about that, and that's important. And then, you know, again, it's a single parcel, and I understand the sensitivity, I think even more so now, of where it is, and I've lived here most of my life, too, here in Cary. So we're kind of caught in a little bit of a spot where our one parcel kind of is part of a much bigger concern, I think. And I think soon, maybe when we hear from the school system, some of those variables will go away, and we'll be able to, and there's no apology needed for having this come back. You know, we're happy to do it, we want to do the right thing, too, if it means not developing the site, but of course, we'd like to try. So thank you again. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. So we'll be readdressing this on August 11th at our next meeting. It's 7:28. We usually take a break at this time, so why don't we take a 10-minute break, and then we'll do our second of our public hearings. So let's reconvene at 7:40, please. And this will give the applicants a chance to leave in social distancing. Thank you.
Thank you all for your time. Thank you.
Session. Before we get to the next item, I just want to reconfirm that we are continuing that last item. I spoke to the town attorney, he said that as long as we just go ahead and confirm it, we don't need a vote to continue the public hearing. We would need a vote to close a public hearing. Our next item is going to be facilitated by Michelle Stiegel, our planning director. It's consideration of text amendments to the unified development ordinance related to process changes. Council was previously briefed on this item at their July 28 meeting, and will be asked to take action on August 11. Ms. Stiegel.
Thank you, Mayor Colley. Just as a brief reminder, there are three main amendments proposed as part of the text amendments that are before you. The first would change the process for special use permits, having those go to town council only moving forward. Also, a change to the major site plan review process, essentially dissolving the distinction between minor and major site plans, and allowing all site plans to be reviewed at the staff level. And then the third, holding the duties of the Board of Adjustment into the Planning and Zoning Board, which would result in dissolving the Board of Adjustment. Again, you were briefed on this item at the last meeting and the public hearing this night.
Do we have any questions before we open the public hearing? Anything from our remote participants? No? At this time, I'll open the public hearing. Assistant Manager Zudma has indicated that there is no one waiting in person. OK? Town Clerk, did we receive any public hearing comments on this item?
Yes, sir, Mayor Colley. One public hearing comment was received related to the item. The comment is from Mark Dixon, 1413 Evertsville Road, Morrisville, North Carolina. He stated, "I would like to, I would like to consider the town of Morrisville to modify the UDO to not require special use permits for Wake County Public School mobile classrooms. I would like for the town to consider Wake County Public Schools a partner in providing education to the community and allow them to make decisions that will allow more seats for the growing number of students entering the community." The town of Cary does not require such permits, and there may be no negative history found with regard to the classrooms that expand the seat availability. Council did receive the entirety of the received public comment, and it will, of the public comment, and it will be entered into the public record.
Thank you. Ms. Stiegel, that is kind of tangential. That's not being addressed in this item, correct?
No, that is not included with this round of amendments.
At this point, unless there is an objection, we can go ahead and close the public hearing if I get a motion in a second to do so.
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
I have a motion from Mayor Protem Johnson.
Is that good?
I have a second from Councilmember Donna Fender. Town Clerk Smith, will you please facilitate a roll call vote on closing the public hearing?
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
The motion to close the public hearing passes unanimously.
OK, now we open up this item for discussion. We're not voting until August 11th on this. Would any council member like to start us off with any comments? Councilmember Robati, please.
Yes, Ms. Stiegel, in the Board of Adjustment meeting minutes, there's some references to to concerns that the members of that board had about what seems to be an issue of self-policing by the Planning and Zoning Board and the town council. Could you speak to that a little bit? Because I, to me, that seems like a valid concern, but I'm sure that you've considered it already. So could you just speak to to that concern?
Yes, absolutely. So a lot of their discussion kind of went back to the philosophy of separation of powers between executive, legislative, and judicial branches, and keeping those functions separate. Right now, in Morrisville, those functions are already intermingled, with council reviewing special use permits, Planning and Zoning Board reviewing special use permits. Also, the alternative equivalent compliance applications are also quasi judicial. State statute does allow for the Planning and Zoning Board to perform the duties of the Board of Adjustment, and obviously also allows town council to perform some of those duties as well. So this is something that we did talk to the town attorney about even before retreat, when we talked to you about, you know, different options for process changes. And different communities do it differently. But when we go back and look at the Board of Adjustment, really just their caseload, not really having heard a case in five years, that's really where the recommendation came from, to look at transferring some of those duties elsewhere. But in no case would the Planning and Zoning Board, even with this change, be reviewing or appealing or considering an appeal of anything it had been involved in acting on or considering.
And is that also true of the town council?
That's true of the town council as well. So with appeals, we are, we're talking about appeals of staff decisions, so it could be appealed by the Planning about appeals of staff decisions. So it could be appealed by the Planning Director, the Town Engineer, our Code Enforcement Officer. It's not an appeal of a decision that's been made by another body, such as yourselves or another board. It's an appeal of a, of a staff decision. So that's not something that any of those bodies would have been previously involved with.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Okay. I'd like to just ask, there was a little question by Planning and Zoning Board about the adminis, removing administrative approvals for certain plans. If you want to go into that a little bit and our retreat discussion and how we decided that it was probably a good idea to streamline things, that'd be good to just have that out in the public as well.
So yes, just to provide a little bit more background on that, Planning and Zoning Board did recommend five to zero approval of the text amendments, with the exception of the ones related to the administrative approvals, the site plans. They felt that those should continue to go through a process, if you will. Some of the discussion that we had at retreat, we talked some about if we're sending something through a process, the benefit, the value add of the process. Because as you know, with our administrative reviews, and I'm talking about the site plans, not the subdivisions, but with our administrative reviews, if all code requirements are met, we have to approve the application. And so we are sending items through a Planning and Zoning Board, a Town Council review process, that ultimately do need to get approved. So an applicant will go through a review process with staff that on average will probably take about five months until staff gets to the point where we verify that, I believe that all the UDO requirements have been met. If that application is a minor site plan, at that point, we approve and sign off on the plan, and it moves forward in the process to construction plan approval and building permit. If that is a use that has the P with the asterisk in it in the chart, which is designated as a major site plan, we get to the point where staff has reviewed the plan, found it to conform with the UDO, but we still have another two to three months to go in that process, sending it through Planning and Zoning Board and Town Council. I think at retreat, we had talked about a couple different options. One was keeping these staff review only. We also talked about waiting to update that use table and changing processes until the land use plan was done and doing that concurrently, or adjusting the thresholds of what was a minor and major site plan. Ultimately, we were directed to keep everything at the staff level, really to streamline processes. And also, I think there's a benefit in not confusing the public. If something's going through a public review process, I do believe that sometimes some of our residents may believe that we have power to, or that all of you have power to deny an application. And at the end of the day, you do need to approve it. So that was some of the discussion at retreat that led to receiving direction to move forward with processing this amendment.
Okay. Because we had a really good discussion about that at the retreat. So if anyone's feeling differently about it, feel free to share or bring that up at our next meeting or tonight if you wish. But I think we, staff did a lot of work to bring us to this point. And we're looking to streamline all processes as possible. Developers are always looking for certainty whenever possible, and this would give them a little bit more on at least a lot of our items.
And just as a reminder, we're not looking to change the subdivision, subdivision process. Some of those are administrative reviews as well. So new single-family detached, new town home developments would still go through that process, even though they are administrative reviews. It was just the distinction between the minor, major site plans.
Okay. Seeing nothing else, do any remote participants want to chime in? No? Okay. So, great. So we'll be voting on that in two weeks, on August 11th. Our next item is action items. There is one action item on tonight's agenda, a resolution appointing advisory board and committee members. Council was previously briefed on this item and completed the Planning and Zoning Board balloting at the July 14th meeting, and council submitted electronic ballots for remaining appointments on July 22nd. Tonight, council is asked to complete any necessary runoffs and take action on the related resolution. Eric Smith, our town clerk, will facilitate the item. Mr. Smith?
Thank you. As the mayor stated, at the July 14th meeting, council was previously briefed on the board and committee balloting process and given instructions on how to complete the electronic balloting. During this meeting, council also completed PZB balloting. Those members who were participating remotely provided, provided completed electronic ballot selections prior to the start of the meeting, and those present in chambers voted using hard copy ballots. Lee Langston and Peter Pritchard were appointed during the PZB balloting process and were removed from further consideration from other boards and committees. An appointment packet for remaining appointments was distributed on July 15th via email, and council was asked to return the completed ballots to the town clerk by 5:00 PM on July 22nd for tallying. Final ballots, tally results, and a process walkthrough were shared with council via email today and will be maintained by staff in accordance with public record requirements. Hard copies of these items have also been placed at your seats for your convenience. Were there any questions prior to the reading of the proposed board and committee appointments?
Okay. Not seeing any questions. If you want to let us know how the balloting came out?
For the Public Education Advisory Committee, Tracy Harden, District 4, and Angie Smith, District 3, were selected. For Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Resources Advisory Committee, James Sawyer, Lou Yorani, and Krishna Pakrul were selected. For the Performance Measures Advisory Committee, Sharon Buru and Ryan Johnson were selected. For the Planning and Zoning Board, as I previously stated, Lee Langston and Peter Pritchard were selected. For the Public Safety Advisory Committee, Kayla McCann and Venuthu Ravindakswarin were selected. Senior Advisory Committee, Catherine Pyokovich was selected. And for the Environment and Stormwater Committee, Mary Jo Holmes was selected.
Thank you for providing this via email in advance. That was very helpful as well. Do any council members have any questions about the process or the chosen people? Okay. Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to adopt Resolution 2020-210-0, make these appointments. Or we can have more discussion. We'll give everyone a minute to review them. And just to be clear, anyone who's not appointed will stay in our system for a year?
That's correct, for a year following the initial date of their application.
And our next appointment cycle would be when?
It should be upcoming in the fall.
In the fall?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay. If anyone has any comments or questions, otherwise I'd entertain a motion. I will go ahead and make a motion to approve Resolution 2020-210-0. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Don, Councilmember Fender. Town Clerk Smith, would you please facilitate a roll call vote?
Councilmember Garamella?
Aye.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Rao?
Aye.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Colley?
Aye.
The motion to approve Resolution 2020-210-0 passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. I note that the Parks and Rec Committee is meeting tomorrow. Do these appointments go into effect immediately, or?
These appointments for Parks and Rec would not go into effect until August the 1st, but the newly appointed members will be reached out to if they wanted to view the meeting, just to notify that it will be taking place.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Okay. Now, we are now at item 13, future meetings, events, and citizen involvement opportunities. So I'd just like to share that our two face covering giveaways were a success, as you can see. These are pretty good-looking face coverings, and they're helping people be safe. Our next two opportunities for each household to receive up to four masks are tomorrow, Wednesday, July 29th, from noon until 1:00 PM at the Cross Timbers Apartments Clubhouse located at 900 Golden Horseshoe Circle. And that's at the Western Region Food Security Site. And another opportunity to receive masks is on Saturday, August 1st, at the Western Wake Farmers Market on Town Hall Drive. And the masks will be provided between 9:00 AM and 11:00 AM, and the Farmers Market itself is open from 8:00 AM until noon. We have a number of our signature annual events scheduled in the next few months, and would ask you to save these dates and monitor our social media channels for info as we seek ways to provide these family-friendly, friendly community events in a safe manner. So these events include August 10th, Samoresville. Parks and Rec are looking at creative ways to celebrate this event. October 24th, Trick or Treat the Trail, Trunk or Treat. November 11th, our Veterans Day Celebration. We thank our staff for making possible the continued functioning of our citizen committees. As I just mentioned, the Parks and Rec Citizen Advisory Committee meets virtually tomorrow night, Wednesday, July 29th, at 6:30 PM. You can see that on Facebook Live or through our website. And the Education and Environmental Committees are meeting virtually the first week in August. Please see more details about these and other upcoming engagement opportunities at townofmooresville.org. And you can always find them at that website. I had that written twice. We're now at item 14, council and manager comments. And we'll take these in order as per here. We'll start off with Councilmember Rao, please. And next will be Councilmember Johnson, I mean Mayor Protem Johnson.
Okay. Thank you. Well, first of all, I just want to thank the staff for the mask distribution. It's been great, and I just think it's been wonderful to do that for our community. I also want to congratulate Martin Meason and his team at Fujifilm Dyson for their progress on the manufacturing of Novavax. And great progress, I think it just validates the great progress being made in our pharmaceutical and life science sector in Mooresville and the Triangle. And I had a really good conversation with the owner of the airport mall, and it's exciting that construction is only a few months away, but there could be an opportunity of them reevaluating potential uses and maybe having, you know, life science kind of companies come in and be there. And then, final thing, just a reminder that Mako Medical and Triangle Area Hindu Temples is providing COVID-19 testing. I want to thank all the temples. You can go to Triangle Area Hindu Temples website to get the next one. I think the last one's on August 8th. And I want to thank Mayor for being at the National Parents' Day at Northwest Park. I want to thank Beverly Yekesen for hosting that. I was able to host a virtual event, but it was a really great cause, and I think we want to celebrate and thank all the parents out there for what they do. That's all I have. Thank you.
Mayor Protem Johnson, please.
Just two quick things. Just about two weeks ago, Mayor and Councilmember Rao and I got to take a tour of our Mooresville Library. I know we were all invited, but it was a, it was in the middle of the day event. And so the three of us got to get a sneak peek at the library. And it is, it is beautiful. It is, it is sad to me that it is not open right now because of all the COVID-19 pandemic that we're dealing with. But as soon as it is open, it is going to be a gem for our community. So I appreciate the opportunity to have that little sneak peek, and we will all wear a mask and social distancing. And so I really do have a message to our community to keep up the good work of wearing a face covering, waiting six feet apart, and washing your hands or using hand sanitizer. Keep following the three Ws. Secretary Cohen today during her remarks showed us that we can, we are seeing improvement in this state. And I know Assistant Manager is going to give us an update on some of the changes the governor has announced. But Secretary Cohen showed, based on the data, that at least we're shifting a little bit in this state. And so I want to tell our citizens, because I see you out there, wearing your face covering when I'm food shopping. And I thank you very much for all you're doing and following those three Ws, because as soon as we can, I would like to get into that library and have it open to the public so that you all can use it. So thank you for what you're doing. Thank you for being a compassionate and caring community. And hopefully we'll, we'll get there sooner than later. So that's all my remarks tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm next. Just to reemphasize, the three Ws are so very important. They're going to make everything else possible, including the census. So I'm going to put on a census hat for a minute. This past week, Mooresville had the largest percent increase of all 12 Wake County municipalities. And as a town, we are now at 63.5% of self-response, which is good. But even with this gain, we are quite a bit behind some of our neighbors. Holly Springs, for example, leads Wake with 80.7%, which is very impressive. I'd love to get up that high. A significant amount of your tax dollars will not be coming back to Mooresville, but will instead go to other towns, counties, and states who achieve higher response rates. Please visit 2020census.gov today and complete your census for your household, and encourage your friends and neighbors to do the same, so we can receive the revenue we need to maintain and enhance the quality of life here in Mooresville. So that was my little PSA. Now I'd like to recognize Councilmember Fender for her comments.
I don't have any comments.
Okay. Councilmember Robati?
Yeah, I just have two comments, which I'll try to keep brief. Some members of the public reached out to me today in response to an article in the Raleigh News &amp; Observer, which I read. And I can see that, although the News &amp; Observer did not say this directly, I can see where the, there was a potential misunderstanding that, that I was one of the protesters that had made an obscene gesture at the presidential motorcade. I wanted to say that I will be getting back to everybody individually, but that is not the case. I was down quite a bit from where the, the people that the News &amp; Observer was referencing were. I didn't see anybody make an obscene gesture, but I certainly did not make one. The Raleigh News &amp; Reporter had already recognized me as a member of the Town Council, and I gave comments to him in that capacity. And having done so, would certainly never have, I, I would, I mean, I wouldn't have it anyway. But I certainly, having identified myself to the press as a member of the Mooresville Town Council, would not have flipped off a presidential motorcade. So in case anyone was wondering, that is the case. I also wanted to call attention to the really, really fine work of the Mooresville Police Department at the, the combination rally protest during the, during the visit yesterday, yesterday? God, yesterday. The Mooresville Police were out there. They were very visible, and they were doing really a great job of crowd control. There was a lot of, there were a lot of complicating factors, which I won't go into. And I'd just like to say that they, they handled all of them admirably. And I may be biased, but I thought they did just as great a job as the Secret Service. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, please.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I would like to say that Mooresville is a fantastic, innovative region. And yesterday, despite what political, you know, position you are in regarding the presidential visit, Mooresville and RTP and our region was honored in recognition of the research, the drive of our scientific community, and also patience that are engaged in trying to find a way out of the pandemic. So I was very impressed to hear of the milestones being achieved right here in our backyard. The fact that we have made it to a Phase 3 clinical trial is amazing. I have worked in the pharmaceutical industry for well over 20 years, and vaccine trials do not take months. They take years. So we need to all be very excited, cautiously optimistic. But this is really a tremendous accomplishment that we have achieved, and it's right here. And, and I really thank everybody that has worked very hard on that. It, it, it's a big deal. And on the lighter side, Mooresville, August 10th, it is not going to be like it was in the previous years, but I hope we can do something to honor that tradition, in a small way at least, because I think that is very unique. It is very Mooresville, and I hope we get to do it again next year. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Garamella, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree. I did not go for, you know, when President Trump was here. But the main thing I heard- I heard from several people who went there, that the Marshall Police did an excellent job in crowd control, and, and it was all praises by a lot of citizens all around. So I would just like to thank them for, you know, making sure our people were safe, and at the same time compiling, you know, going with the rules that were set. That's it. Thank you so much. And I had one question for Martha, like the masks which we're giving away, are they usable masks, reusable ones, or are they like one-time use?
The paper maps that, that are out is a...
Masks.
Oh, masks. Yes, they are reusable, but you need to wash them periodically.
No, okay, because, like, yeah, it was not very clear, like, they're saying giving away masks, but if it was reusable or, you know, one-time use? Okay, thank you.
They're cloth reusable. Town Manager Page, does staff have any other updates for us this evening?
Yes, sir. If you'd recognize Brandon, please, he has a couple.
Assistant Manager Zudma, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Members of Council. Two items for you. One is just an update you may be aware of, but for the public in case they have not heard. Governor Cooper today did issue Executive Order 153, which, among other things, primarily stops the sale of alcoholic drinks in restaurants, breweries, wineries, and distilleries at 11:00 p.m. in North Carolina, and that takes effect this Friday, July 31st. Beyond that, I would, not to be redundant, but echo the comments from the mayor and the Mayor Pro Tem, that we did get good news from Secretary Cohen, that our numbers are starting to trend in the right direction, but that should be further incentive to use your face coverings and follow the three Ws, and not a reason to relax. So we're, we're starting to see some of that turn, and we can continue to turn that tide. So I encourage everybody to take advantage of these good masks that we've got from the town and other places, and protect yourself and others. The other item is to share an update with you in regards to the Morrisville Aquatics and Fitness Center. Very pleased to share with you that we intend to open the facility on August 31st. We have been very careful in providing a date up to this point, because we don't want to be premature with that, but based on where we are, we are comfortable that we will be able to open the facility on Monday, August 31st. At this point, we anticipate being able to open the pool. We do not know if we'll be able to open the, the fitness, the gym side, depending on what happens. We anticipate probably midweek next week, having an update further from the governor's office in regards to where we are with the phasing and if we'll be able to move forward or not. But staff has developed alternative plans to be prepared for both of those. With that, we would like to conduct tours of the facility for members of Town Council, as well as our Parks, Recreation, Cultural Resources Advisory Committee, our Senior Advisory Committee, and we're going to invite our former members back for a sneak preview, if you will. Our intention is to do that the week of August 24th, so one week prior to the soft opening on the 31st, and we will be in touch with you to discuss times and availability and convenience for you to come over. We do have two meetings that week, both Tuesday and Thursday, so we'll look at either before a meeting, or if that's not convenient, we'll certainly look at other times for anyone that's interested. And we'll do those in small groups, where we, of course, can maintain social distancing and the safety of, of staff and visitors. Our intention is also then to, shortly after, hold a ribbon-cutting open house celebration for the facility. We would like to look at doing that the week of September 7th, following Labor Day. Again, we'll have an email out later this week to touch base with you on availability, and when a good time that week might be to have that event. We are finalizing our week-by-week communications plan, and we anticipate beginning to share information with the public next Monday of a sort of a general version, including that date. And then again, by midweek, we should know more specifically what we're going to be able to open and share guidelines for the public with what they'll have access to and how to use some signup genius opportunities to access the facility once it's open. Happy to answer any questions.
And Councilmember Rao has a question, please.
Deputy Manager Zudma, and when you open the facility on August 31st, will the, and I'm not asking this for myself, but I've been getting some questions from the public, will the tennis courts be accessible?
Yes, our intention is to open the tennis courts.
Okay, I'm also happy to.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. The other thing, when, when the facility opens too, will the courts, will it be like the way it used to be, where you have to be, you go sign in first and then go use the courts when you do open up the gym? Or will those courts be completely public courts where people can go there and play?
We will initially focus on signup out of COVID concerns, and then potentially transition afterwards.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
I've been very fortunate to have some time to enjoy some of the MAFC outdoor activities that you guys have a signup genius for, so I'd encourage people to check out the Parks and Rec Facebook page for that link, for signup genius. There's lots of good things during the day. There's yoga, Tai Chi, lots of core workouts that are outdoors, socially distanced.
Yes, sir, we're having a lot of success, a lot of interest in those outdoor classes, primarily over at Morrisville Community Park, so we do encourage people to take advantage of that.
Okay. I had one quick question about Executive Order 153. All the other enforcement that we've been doing has been generally educational. Do you guys expect that that will be the same for this order?
Absolutely.
Okay, just want to make it very clear that we're just...
Yep, we're looking for voluntary cooperation, and, and businesses doing the right thing, and appreciating the, the significance of where we are.
Okay, great. Any other questions from the council? Okay, thank you very much for the updates.
Thank you.
Anything else from staff? Town Manager Page? Okay. Our next item is a work session. We have one work session this evening on Morrisville Community Park Phase III Design Update. Jerry Allen, our Parks and Recreation Director, will facilitate the work session. Mr. Allen?
Good evening, everyone. It's great to be here with you again this month with another update on a design project that we've been working on in conjunction with CLH Design. The project is Morrisville Community Park Phase III. And just as a little bit of background on the, on the project, the original park was Eric, can you help me with advancing the slide, please? Great, thank you, sir. The initial phase of the park was built in nineteen, in the early 1990s, which included the picnic shelter, restroom, playground, and an open playfield. In 2002, the town developed a master plan that included use of the rest of the site, and in those areas, we added two more sports fields, tennis courts, restrooms, you know, walking trails, and supportive amenities. Part of that site plan was put in place in 2004, when the ballfields, restroom were open, and part of the Hatchet Creek Greenway was added, but there were still areas in the park left to be developed. So in 2018, the Parks and Recreation Master Plan included a copy of that site plan that had been updated and adjusted only slightly. Most of the amenities were kept for the Phase III area. So that plan also showed that the town in general, when you looked at our overall tennis court supply, we were approximately two courts short at that time in 2018 of, you know, growing to a deficit of six courts by 2027. When we rebuilt Morrisville Aquatic and Fitness Center, we lost a court. There were three there, now only two. And so we're currently at a deficit of three courts, based on our population, and again, growing to six by 2027. The master plan also recommended pedestrian connectivity to as many residents as possible, to our greenways, to our community parks, to, to any recreation facilities. And so the walking trails, you know, in this plan would connect to adjacent neighborhoods. With all that in mind, we requested funding in 2019 to design Phase III and contracted with CLH Design. So CLH has been hard at work, doing a lot of site analysis and conceptual drawings, and so Lauren Dixon, our project manager, is here tonight to tell you about the work they've been doing.
Good evening, everyone, and I hope you're doing well. I'm going to go through kind of where we're at, how we got here with some of our site analysis, and then show you our initial concept for this project. Let me see, I've requested Control to hop in here. I don't see that's letting me do that quite yet. There we go. Okay, so the entirety of this park is about 35 acres. The existing parcel has a playground, picnic shelter, open playfield, parking lot, youth baseball field, softball field, concessions restroom, and then there's a piece of the Hatchet Creek Greenway section that goes through the park. The proposed program that we're looking at tonight, what we've based our concept on, is showing three tennis courts and three pickleball courts. These will be the first pickleball courts in the town of Morrisville. It is a growing sport. If you haven't heard about it, it's, it's getting very popular. A lot of people say it's, it's more in the older population, but we see a lot of younger people playing it as well, and throughout all of the parks that we do. There is also a proposed small restroom and shelter building that's being proposed at the courts, the walking trails that Jerry spoke about earlier that will connect to the adjacent neighborhoods, and prefabricated picnic shelter kind of over near where those walking trails and the batting cages are, if you're familiar with this park. The pickleball has been something that was added to this project program because of the growing popularity and because the town has had requests for this sport in the town. Jumped ahead.
Sorry, it's hard to control this thing.
Jumping around on me, that's all right. This is the entirety of the park that you see in the red outline, but the area that we are focusing our work on is outlined in red there. So you can see that kind of around the outside of the ballfield there, and there's an existing parking lot. Comes off. Okay. This is a zoom in, we've kind of broken this up, because this is a pretty long linear site, so we've broken this up into kind of two pieces, if you will. And so this is the area zoomed in aerial kind of showing where that Hatchet Creek Greenway existing comes through the park and connects up across, past the parking lot. And you can see there's a stream crossing a bridge that comes in between where the fields are. And this is showing the site analysis of this particular area. So what you see in purple is a large transmission easement. The gray that you're seeing is the existing impervious surface of the pavement. The blue is where the streams are. There's actually a stream crossing with a bridge, that, there's the walk that comes in between the two ballfields, there's a stream crossing there with a pedestrian bridge. And then Kudrow Lane, where that kind of comes into that parking lot, actually crosses over the stream. There are no wetlands that were found in this portion of the site, and I should say that we've had our environmental consultant out on this site and has delineated the wetlands as well as the stream buffers, and they've also met with the Army Corps of Engineers and DWQ about this. And you can see that blue dashed line is your floodway that's associated with this site. This is kind of the second area that we are, we're tasked with looking at, and I just wanted to kind of show a zoomed-in aerial, because you can see a little bit more definition than kind of the enlarged one. You can see behind the ballfield, that kind of open cleared space and the existing batting cages. And then if you hop to the next one for me. And this is that area with our site analysis kind of shown on it. So the yellow that you're seeing is the stream buffers, the blue is again the streams. There are a few small pockets of wetlands that you can see with that kind of dark green. And there, so the, the dark purple is the actual sewer lines, and you will see two that traverse this portion of the site that do not have easements associated with them. Those are prior to the town of Morrisville kind of partnering with Cary for sewer easements. And then the light purple that you see right along the property line is an actual easement that's associated with the lines. We kind of have two different things happening with utilities in this area. You see at the upper northernmost part, there's a rectangle there that is one of those existing batting cages. This is the overall kind of concept plan of what we're proposing. So up by the parking lot, you can see that large kind of green and blue is the court area. There will be a stormwater control measure required to treat the impervious surface on this site, so that's what that kind of large aquamarine shape is. The white rectangle to the north, adjacent to the parking lot, is the proposed restroom and shelter. And then you can see down to the south, connecting to that existing trail that goes between the two ballfields, is the proposed trail system. And I'll zoom in on both of these areas, so you can see it a little more in depth. I just kind of wanted you to see how everything connects. Here's the proposed court area. So there's the three tennis courts and the three pickleball courts. These would be separated by fence, so the tennis court would be within one fenced enclosure, and the pickleball courts, you would actually fence in the one that runs the opposite direction from the two separately, but they would be within their own fenced-in area. There's the stormwater control measure kind of to the south of that. These courts will require a retaining wall, so you'll see kind of a dark gray line running to the north of the courts. Yes, thank you, Jerry. Along that area is, is going to be a required retaining wall in order to get these courts in and to get, you know, the grade on those that's required. That's really the majority of what's happening here. The existing parking is adequate for, for what we're proposing here, so there's no new pavement being proposed for parking. There is the potential, in order to do the paved trail that we're going to look at next, there is the potential that we are going to need to pull up a piece of that existing parking lot and put in impervious pavement. That's something that we have to explore further as we kind of run calculations and further detail this, but I did want to let you know about that. Next to what you're looking at is the trail system. This, this entire trail was laid out really with the consideration of removing as few trees as possible. So we're really looking at where your larger existing trees are. We have a tree survey of this entire area, and where we can make the necessary connections to the adjacent neighborhoods, but leave this trail in amongst, there's, there's some very nice older growth trees throughout this area. We're also being cognizant of those stream buffers and the number of crossings that we will need, because they will, will require boardwalks, and how those also play with the existing sewer lines. So not marching people directly kind of down a sewer easement, but, but using those to cross the streams and to kind of cross those where appropriate. The large white square that you see to the north there, kind of by the batting cages, is the kind of prefabricated shelter that we're proposing. The intent of that is really that it's for, it's for any park users, but particularly if they're with a game or if people are using the batting cages, so they have a kind of a piece, a shelter that's adjacent to that, in that open green space. So I'm just going to kind of go through some of the same things that I reviewed when we talked about Crabtree Creek Nature Park the last time. So some of the sustainability goals were the same here, but this is a different site. It's a different program. So we took a look at the site conditions, what the, what the opportunities for tree preservation were, looking at the trails and how we could avoid trees but still make the necessary connections. We looked at the restroom building and citing it appropriately for shading and daylighting. This, I'll go into the restroom building a little bit more in detail, but just so you have an idea, it's approximately 333 square feet of restroom. It's two restrooms, two individual restrooms, along with a shade structure that has room for a couple picnic tables underneath of it. The, this is, is very similar to kind of what we looked at with Crabtree Creek Nature Park, even though that building was larger. So building orientation, looking at the materials that we're kind of proposing early, so recycled or recyclable, renewable. I'm not going to read through everything on this for you, but low-flow plant fixtures, instantaneous hot water, daylight sensors, LED lighting, native plant material from a landscape perspective, and water-wise landscaping, things of that nature. This is a zoom in of the concept for the restroom building. So this is a small facility. Like I said, it's just two restrooms, but this also, if you see in that 3D view too, you'll kind of see the doors at the end there. This has also been designed to be able to house the lighting cabinet for the lights for the courts. So there's a portion of this building that that lighting cabinet could be in at the end. You see that the, the daylighting, there's storefront at the top to provide natural daylighting into those restrooms, a water fountain. We have been discussing already the opportunity to have a bottle fill. We have been discussing already the opportunity to have a bottle fill water fountain, as well as a regular water fountain, and looking at some of the door hardware for the building to address some of the issues that we've all been seeing in this world we're living in. So door hardware that you could use your elbows to kind of open rather than having to always use your hands. And that's really, there's a janitor chase in between the two restroom buildings. It's a pretty straightforward building from that perspective. Are there any questions about kind of the concept or design or?
Councilmember Rabadi?
Will the restrooms be designated male and female, or will they both be unisex?
I think at this time, we've discussed them being unisex.
I believe that's what we've considered, is just leaving them open.
They'd be large enough to essentially be a family restroom?
Yes, they'll both be accessible, so sized for an accessible restroom.
You mentioned, given COVID and stuff, are we looking for touchless soap dispensers?
Yes, there we are.
And all those types of things, so as touchless as possible? Okay, that's great. You said you're investigating a bottle water fountain? Can we?
We just need to talk with the town about if you have a standard, if there's one you've used that makes it easier from a maintenance standpoint. But yes, the discussion has been to include a bottle fill water fountain as well.
Because I know those are difficult when they're outdoor, but that would be great.
Correct. Correct.
Are we getting really into it, or are you going to finish your presentation before we get into lots of questions and suggestions?
Well, at this point, we wanted to pause if you had any specific questions about any of the layout or anything that Lauren can answer. But we can go through the remainder and then come back if we need to.
Sure.
Why don't we go through the whole thing, and then we can?
Okay.
Take them like that. Thank you.
Okay. Using the conceptual plan, CLH provided a construction cost estimate for us, and so we've taken that and broken it down into sections or parts of the project. You can see there what the estimates are for each different aspect, with a total construction cost estimate of about one and a half million dollars. Now, there is a twenty percent contingency on that estimate at this point. The construction cost estimate is about one point five six. As far as any chance to break that up and do it in two projects, it is possible to phase this project because the work is going on in two distinct parts of the park, but both of those, you know, projects would use the parking lot as the phasing, or as the laydown area for your equipment and your access for all your construction equipment. And so there would be that increased risk of damage to your parking lot area if you didn't have to do that twice. The tennis, pickleball, and restroom building area, you know, would need to go in together as well as the stormwater work that goes in there, and then the walking trails and the small shelter could be separated easier.
And Jerry, just to kind of bring that discussion about phasing, the sewer line that we would be tying into would actually require a stream crossing. So the idea currently is that we would be using that same area to provide access to the portion of the site that's south. So you may be redoing a little bit of that work.
So if we came back later to do the trails, it would require having to put in a construction crossing for access to the area? So, yeah, so that actually would be an additional cost?
Correct.
Okay. Regarding public engagement, we took the same concept plan to the advisory committee and also posted it online for feedback from the community through an online public comment portal. The portal was advertised through our social media resources, and we also reached out to the adjacent homeowners associations, you know, there next to the park, to their management companies, and provided information and links to the portal. Between June nineteenth and July, or June nineteenth and July thirteenth, there were about a hundred and thirty comments that we received. Generally, you know, you can see there what the breakdown was of those who supported, a few that voiced, you know, that they would prefer not to develop or build the park, several that referenced the dog parks, mostly positive, a few not so much. Twenty-three did refer to a disc golf course, and then basketball, and then there were just a couple of general comments. I will mention, since July thirteenth, we've received an additional thirteen comments. So we have a total of a hundred and forty-three. And of those, one referenced a dog park, and twelve out of those thirteen either supported it as it is or reinforced the need for tennis courts. The advisory committee reviewed the plan and discussed it at their June twenty-sixth meeting, and they were supportive of the park concept. There was a lot of conversation at that meeting about some, you know, other potential uses in the area, one of which was disc golf, and the advisory committee asked us to do some research and get some additional information about that possibility. As you heard in public comments earlier, you know, I have had a chance to meet with the Capital Area Disc League, Kyle and I have, to look at not only that site, but, you know, to learn more about how the construction could be done, how disc golf typically would be constructed and laid out in a wooded area. We feel like that if it was the desire to add a disc golf course in that area, that it could be done either in conjunction as CLH is finishing construction designs or added in a way that would not impact necessarily their schedule or their planning enough, to make a big difference, because it could be added around the trails, in between the trails. But obviously, anytime you add something, there is an additional cost for adding a course. And there's not a large area here, so we would not be looking at a full disc golf course, which would be eighteen holes. What we're discussing and what was presented at the advisory committee was a short course called an ace place, which involves nine holes. And those nine holes are all a little bit shorter, and, you know, so that it's fun for everybody, from younger kids to older. The idea being your more advanced players have an opportunity in most cases to be able to give an ace, you know, a hole in one, per se, but your younger players can play it and develop their skills. So the cost for that package and for the work that would be required, we're estimating it around twenty-five hundred dollars, twenty-five hundred to three thousand dollars per hole. So you're looking at a total cost of, you know, between twenty-two thousand to twenty-seven thousand dollars, you know, so an average about twenty-five. So, but that not only brings in the baskets, but there is timbers for the tee boxes, there is compactable material that goes inside those timbers, there's rubber mats to help to avoid slipping when you're teeing off. There's a lot of small things that go into it besides just the baskets that you see, you know, if you're out at a park and you see a basket, so. But we've got a cost estimate there in that neighborhood of twenty-five thousand. So with that, we'll open up to any questions you have. If we need to go back to a slide, if you'd like to see something, just let me know.
I've got a couple of things. We can start with Mayor Pretem Johnson.
So, thank you, Jerry and Lauren. I wanted to, if you could bring up the slide that shows the trails, you know, trail section. I think you mentioned the connections to the neighborhoods, but just to be clear, the connection, there's like a little stub on the right, and then it looks like the trail goes down to the bottom. Are those the two connections then to two different neighborhoods?
They are.
Liz, can you speak loudly because you're fainting out?
Okay. So my question was about the connections of the greenway to the neighborhoods, to the right and to the bottom.
Yeah, this connection at the bottom. Yeah, this connection at the bottom would connect at a road that's currently in the Huntington Apartments complex. The connection here to the east connects over to a connection, it's an apartment complex that's adjacent to the golf course. So there's a Preston Apartment Complex here. And actually, if you walk back there, as I had a chance to last week, there is a very well-worn trail here. So you can see that there's been a great deal of foot traffic in and out of this site from the neighborhoods. So there's a very well-worn trail that follows very close to this route, and another trail, not quite as worn, but another trail that leads over into this area. So we're obviously getting pedestrian activity. In the couple of hours that we were there, I saw several people, mostly teenagers, walking through in and out. And you can look around and see that there has been a great deal of foot traffic in the woods.
And then on the greenway theme, the rest of the greenway that's already existing is not going to be impacted. Is that correct?
That's correct. It would not be impacted at all. In fact, that greenway runs the other side of the stream, and the greenway, or the connection for these walking trails would come around the ball field and connect into an existing walkway that runs between the ball fields. And so, you know, the only new construction would be behind the field and in the woods. The rest of this is existing.
There would be some modification of the existing connection off that parking lot, kind of as it comes off, in order to fit in the stormwater control measure and the grading for that, but we're still providing a connection from the parking lot to that greenway trail.
Thank you for the clarification. I walk this greenway a lot. I walk the loop in the park a lot as well, and I can see, I'm not surprised, Jerry, that you see a well-worn path through there. There are people here all the time, no matter day, time of day. It is well-used, so I know this is going to be well-used as well and greatly appreciated. So the design, it looks fabulous. I did, I had a question about the phasing, and would there be a cost associated if we go to two different phases? But you answered that question. Is the desire to do this project all in one phase then?
That would definitely be our desire and recommendation to, like I said, to reduce that impact and the cost. The additional stream crossing is not going to be cheap for, you know, a construction project, remobilization for contractors. You'd be bidding the project twice. I mean, so there are a number of things that would increase the cost.
You'd be permitting it, you'd be permitting it twice too, so, because you'd be impacting that stream twice. I mean, the sewer line would basically bore and jack probably under that stream, but you would still have impacts to it, and so you'd have to go through the state for that. So you'd have to do that twice if you decided to split it up into two.
Okay. Yeah, I hear the desire to do the whole project as one is probably the best option if financially feasible. But, okay, so thank you for that, for clarifying that. Jerry, all the comments you sent us, they're just comments without any kind of name associated with them. Is that how we took the comments online? Where folks, folks did not have to leave their name and address? Is that correct?
No, we did ask for name and address with that. It just, for the spreadsheet to be easier to read, we didn't add all those columns. I asked staff to go back and take a look at that this afternoon. Out of the hundred and forty-three, now obviously, you know, if someone can put in an address, we wouldn't know necessarily whether it is or not their home address, but out of the hundred and forty-three, about a hundred and four we were given residence addresses for. Thirty-three gave a non-resident address, and there were six that, you know, if they just put in a number, for example, or, you know, just so that we'd fill in that box, obviously, we don't know. But a hundred and four did have resident addresses out of the hundred and forty-three.
Okay. Because we've had a lot of conversation about that recently, about comments and who they're from. If we could get that information, is that easy enough to share with us?
Yes, we can, we can add those columns and add that information and send it back out to council. That won't be a problem at all.
Thank you. And then lastly, I have to bring this up. There are lots of comments about a dog park. And I was able, so the beauty of, or one of the positives, not the beauty, but one of the positives that's come out of this pandemic is that all of our advisory committee meetings are on Facebook Live. So I was able to watch this last Parks and Rec Advisory Committee, and I know you talked a lot about a dog park and why that's probably not feasible here. But, so I bring it up because I have heard the desire for a dog park for years, quite frankly, here in town. There are many folks that desire a dog park, and we're hearing from them now more and more, which is a good thing. So that says to me that needs to kind of rise to the top here. So, you know, what, and I, you know, we don't have to answer this tonight, but I think we need to have a discussion soon as a council and staff about what are we going to do to satisfy that desire and need for a dog park here in town?
There was a great deal of discussion at the advisory committee meeting, and the committee asked us as a staff to go back and look at all of our park sites to see and any other land that we have, to see the feasibility at any site for a dog park or also for disc golf. And so we've looked at those sites, done some of that research, and we'll be talking with that, you know, with the committee about that tomorrow, as a matter of fact, at their meeting. You know, we looked at dog parks throughout Wake County, out and outside of Wake County in the immediate area, to see, you know, what kind of space are you talking about for a dog park? And, you know, just in case you're wondering, and I know the question may come up, the fenced in area, just the space where the dogs are allowed to run and play, ranges dramatically. I mean, the smallest we found was about a point-six acre area at a small park in Garner. They had another one in Garner, three acres inside the fenced area. Very commonly, we saw, you know, one point two acres, two point two, one point five, just as examples. So, you know, it's not, it's not easy to do on a small footprint. Let's put it that way. And especially for an open municipal dog park, you know, if you have an apartment complex or an HOA where your primary user wouldn't live in that neighborhood, you just don't need as big of a space. But when you're opening it to the whole public, now you're looking at a larger need. So I share that with you because the area where the tennis courts are here, we looked at, and I believe it's, you know, this entire area is about eight tenths of an acre. So you don't even, you don't even have a full acre there to work with in the footprint of where the tennis courts and the pond are.
And I would guess that the smaller ones that you were referencing in Garner, Jerry, were not both a large and small dog, dog park?
They were not. They were shared space between.
Typically, you fence those areas, you know, separately.
Okay, well, thank you. Then my last comment is that we waited a long time for phase, I feel like I've been talking about phase three of Morrisville Community Park forever. So I'm pleased that we're, we've gotten to this, this place. I'm also pleased, or I want to thank the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee for all the work that they put in as well. And I'm pleased to see that they're approved this design concept as well, if that's the right way. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Fender, please?
Two questions. The first is, in the current overview, there's that small green space beside the existing parking lot. Is that green space used for anything now?
You know, it's, it is an open field. I mean, you do have people that will obviously go out, take their dogs out there. I see from time to time a few people playing in that area, people sitting on blankets, you know, frisbee throwing, just, you know, things you can do in an open space. I know Councilmember Johnson mentioned being there very often. She may have seen some similar activities, or any of, anyone else who goes there regularly probably sees similar activities.
Okay. And then if you were going to put the nine-hole disc golf course or incorporate that with its design, where would it go?
In the trail portion.
You'd be looking at this wooded area here where the trails were shown, and actually And actually, when you look at this particular map, the day we went out and walked it together with the Capital Area Disc League, the majority of this area is in the 100-year flood plain. And between the stream channels, there's a great deal of sand buildup and wash. You can see where the floodwaters have came up. And so when we walked it and looked at it, you know, we would probably have to stay more to some of the perimeter areas and possibly bring some of it out here behind the baseball field. The first hole might actually come down the side of the baseball field over here in order to be able to work around and try to stay out of those worst flood areas as much as possible. The gentleman from Capital Area Disc League, you know, and I had talked about it. He, you know, he sent me a follow-up email. He felt like nine holes could work here and would just have to be done creatively to avoid some of those worst flood areas.
So it would be kind of intertwined or integrated among the, where the trail is planning to go?
Yes, you wouldn't necessarily have a hole that would run right along the trail. But it, you know, you might walk the trail to the next tee box. Let me zoom in a little bit. You know, you might walk the trail to a tee box that would then throw out into a wooded area and then relay back to another basket. Then get back on the trail, walk over to another high area, throw out to a tee box that would be in the wooded area, and then come back. Many of the disc golf courses, you know, that he explained and the one that we went and saw in Cary, you know, the fairways are left natural, whether that's grass, whether that's mulch. They go in and try to clear as little as possible. They avoid clearing any large trees, mostly underbrush and small growth, to create a natural fairway through the woods. So, so, but the paths themselves are very much natural. The Jay, the gentleman that we were talking with, kind of, he described it to me at one point as disc golf being an all-terrain sport.
Okay, that's good.
Okay, this TJ, and looking at that screen, I was wondering, is it possible down at the bottom of the baseball field, is it possible to have one of our greenway trails go up towards the restrooms to the left? Was that looked at as a nice connection there?
So the issue with this site is the entire site is pretty much maxed out from an impervious surface standpoint. So any impervious surface that we are adding on this portion of the site, we have to balance somewhere else. The easiest way to do that currently is to take a look at that existing parking lot and pulling up that pavement and coming in with pervious pavement to over-treat or existing impervious in order to put in this trail. So you'll actually see kind of where it's, there's that, the trail turns brown, if you will. That's actually proposed as a stone trail. That would be grit and what would run through the woods there and through the boardwalk is all a stone trail. We've been speaking with the town engineering and that would not be considered impervious. So we would pave it up to where the shelter and the batting cages are, and then we would go to a grit because we have to balance all of the impervious that we put in. So we'll have to pull up the same amount of asphalt in the existing parking lot as we put down. So if we run that trail as a loop all the way around to the existing restrooms, that's that much more impervious surface that we have to find a way to treat on-site. If we aren't able to do that, you'd have to look at building another stormwater control measure on this portion of the site, which would eat into that existing wooded area a good bit. Or it would eat up the rest of that kind of lawn green space around that shelter, depending on how you'd manage it. It's also kind of tricky to treat impervious surface along a trail. You'd have to put it in a swale and kind of get it to a stormwater control measure. So that's the reason that what you're looking at is the way that it is. If you go back to that analysis drawing, Jerry, you can also see the start of some wetlands that go up adjacent to the ball fields. And there is a Town of Cary sewer easement. And so you are really pinched between the edge of the ball field, where those wetlands are, and that sewer easement. From a grading and drainage and everything else perspective, you'd have, you would definitely impact the, the wetlands that are shown right there. And you'd have to be in conversation with the Town of Cary about putting a trail within their easement. And we'd have to look at the town zoning to make sure that there's not a landscape buffer required along there. That would be the other requirement. If it's a, you know, a 20-foot landscape buffer, I don't know if you allow trails within your own buffer for the park. That was the other constraint.
Is there such a thing as permeable greenway, other than grit? Like you're talking about permeable pavement at the?
So, yeah, but that's not permeable in the sense, we're not at the beach, so it doesn't permeate all the way through the soil. So we still have to have an outfall pipe. It goes through that pavement. It goes into a stone base underneath of that and captures that water. And the stone underneath actually treats it, and then we still have to pipe it out after it's been treated. So it's not a linear system. It's, it's for a, like an area. Does that make sense? For like a large paved area, you can do that with, but it's not something that you would do along a linear greenway.
There are some permeable surface options. We recently installed permeable sidewalks up at the Picknick Shelter Home site that would allow water to drain through and soak into the soil around them. I will share with you, they were much more expensive than standard sidewalk.
Much more.
But we were asked to do that because of the, you know, impermeable, impermeable surfaces that are, that's already on-site. You know, another issue anytime you're dealing with a site like this, the site is so flat, it makes it very difficult to build treatment devices. I mean, water doesn't flow uphill very well. And, you know, so everything has to be able to flow into the treatment device. But when you've got a site this flat, it makes it very difficult to build.
And the stormwater control measure, like roughly the size that you're seeing near the courts is what it's going to take to just treat the shelter building in those courts? Just to give you a bit of scale perspective in that.
There you go.
So I'm just thinking long-term that even though the sidewalks that are permeable cost more to start, they might last longer and require less maintenance than the grit trail, which wouldn't be that user-friendly for biking and other things. So I'd just be curious about the feasibility of that.
Well, I'd have to look at that because you're in the flood plain. I don't really think that that's actually something that you'd be able to do well there. It's also, you'd have to get your soil tests to make sure that you have soil that will actually drain. So I think there'd be a lot further exploration in order to look at doing that entire kind of grit trail is what you're thinking? Is that what I'm understanding as a permeable pavement?
Yeah, or at least portions, if that means for stormwater as well.
Yeah, we'd, we'd have, we'd definitely have to explore that further. We would need to get some more soil boardings in that area and kind of have a conversation about that and what the feasibility of that would be.
And as the plans are developed, and you, obviously, construction plans haven't started yet. These are all schematics. And we, we will be having more in-depth conversations with our stormwater division as this moves forward and as they put construction drawings together to start some middles. So there will be, I'm sure, a lot more conversation with our stormwater staff about how this site, or. I, I share and agree with your concern, Mayor, with the gravel paths, stone. It is, you know, a little more difficult as a, of a walking surface. It's not as accessible. And, and, you know, heavy rains, we may have some wash areas that we may have to go back and address.
Yeah, I just wanted to do it once, do it really well, and then move on, especially since we've been waiting so long for this. So I have a couple of other things also. So we're gonna, even with these three courts, we're still going to be short another one by 2007, I mean, 2027. Any possibility we can get a fourth court on there?
No, a fourth court does not fit.
There's no room to left there? Is that topographical problems or?
It's topographical problems. There's an existing trail that comes through there. And you would basically be, in order to grade this out, that trail would have to be redone. The wall would get a good bit larger, as well as all of the trees you're looking at, basically buffering between those courts and that existing trail would be removed.
And the stormwater?
The stormwater control measure, I don't think we could get one that would fit.
So we'd have to do more stormwater as well? Okay, I just, it's problematic that we're going to have to do a whole nother court somewhere else. But I, I get that. How about the idea of having a basketball hoop or two on the, one of the tennis courts to give us a little flexibility there? I've seen that done in other places.
I, I mean, Jerry, I'll leave that up to you. I see a lot of times when you mix that, you end up with conflicting interests. So you get people who want to play basketball, fighting over the courts with people who want to play tennis, but.
That is one concern that, that I would definitely have. And, you know, depending on where you put it, you know, basketballs do tend to get away, flying into the other courts. I mean, I think you're going to have tennis balls that would do the same. That's not something we had talked about at this point, but it's something we could consider.
I'd appreciate consideration, some pros and cons on that. I heard some discussions about the pickleball courts and the idea of maybe not striping the tennis courts because that would also cause conflicting uses and trying to decide. But I'm sure that staff would be able to figure out a way to make sure that there's equitability and things like that. And this would give us the opportunity to have six pickleball courts, so make tournaments and other events more feasible, as a thought, even though.
We can, we can look at that. At CLH, we have done, we did, I think it's Nightdale Station Park, if I'm remembering correctly. We striped the tennis courts for pickleball. And we have gone back years af, you know, after that has been built and the town has actually regretted making that decision. They wish that they had left it striped separately. Typically, those two user groups, they're both in high demand and it has caused a lot of conflict. So our recommendation to the town was not to stripe for both.
Okay.
We, we've had some experience with that in the past at the Aquatic Center as well. The actual net height is a little bit different for the official play. And so you end up having to figure out a way to put in ways to adjust that net height for when people want to play one sport. Or they weigh it down with something to pull down on the net and loosen the net. And then when the tennis players show up, they have to tighten it back up. So there are some issues that we run into.
Okay, I just like the idea of flexibility. It doesn't look like we're going to be doing any more tennis or pickleball courts anytime in the future or basketball. So I'd love to be able to try to get as much utility out of this entire park as possible. I'd just like to also say that as a person who enjoys disc golf and has for years, I think that this would be a great opportunity to add that to our asset base. I know that we tried to do it in Northwest Park. We found it was too conflicting with people walking around. And given the fact that there's trees and the trails here, I believe that it can be done that you don't have the conflict with the walkers. You can keep the baskets and the tee boxes away from the trails in a safe manner. And then next, I was going to recognize Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, and then Councilmember Rao, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank Jerry and the entire Parks and Rec Committee for working so diligently and everyone that's contributed to the design. This is something that we've been waiting for, for a while. With that in mind, I am highly sensitive about the fact that we will be removing some of our tree canopy in order to make this happen. And there also is flooding concerns in this area potentially, you know, over time. It seems like we've had three or four, 500-year floods in the last six months. And as we put impervious pavement in this space, we do really have to seriously consider our stormwater management. And I am a fan of not adding asphalt to the park, if we can manage that, to have gravel where we can add gravel to allow the flexibility of having that run, minimizing stormwater retention and keeping more trees. We have seen along Town Hall Drive how we are needing to create a larger stormwater management area. And we took out quite a few trees in order to start that project. So I'm highly sensitive today because seeing that, you know, plan is great, but we took out a lot of trees. So whatever we can do to keep the trees and to balance, you know, our stormwater needs would be great, even if we have to go to gravel in some areas. So that's where I stand on that. The other is, I really would like to see a dog park in the Town of Mooresville. I've seen significant amounts of comments from this project. I have heard significant amount of comments over the years. And we just need to commit to it. And, and we've always said, well, it doesn't work here, or it doesn't work there, or this is for this, or this is for that. We need to make a commitment as a council and make it happen. And I, I see where the tennis courts are, and I think some of that real estate could be used as a dog park. But it is what it is, but we just need to think about that dog park and how do we solve for that? So keep the trees as best we can, so thank you.
Councilmember Rao, please.
Jerry, with regards to the tennis courts, it has a, it being a $220,000 item with the pickleball courts, have there, are we going to be, is there any opportunity for USTA grant programs for parks? I know that things are probably on hold with them now with COVID, but is that something we can research with our local tennis associations to see what options there are or grant money?
It is, it is. And we've had some preliminary conversations with Western Wake Tennis representative about that. We have not applied for those grants to this point, obviously, until we meet with council and if council directs us to move forward, continue with this design, then we'll go back to them and look at that great opportunity in, in that application process.
Okay, because I don't know.
And these courts were laid out to meet, these courts were laid out to meet those guidelines, so that would be an option.
Okay, all right.
For their sizes and all of the, all of the requirements of that.
I wonder whether it would be like for the whole court construction? Or I guess there's just different options that they have on facility assistance and those kinds of things, so. All right, well, thank you for considering.
And we'd be, and we'll be talking with them and researching all those options for construction assistance or equipment or whatever assistance there is available. Again, you know, as long as council directs us to continue on this path.
I'm glad that there's three courts. I just feel like when you look at our church, the only follow-up is with Church Street, the three courts just seems like it's just not enough, given the demand there. But maybe, you know, obviously, this is about as much as we can, we can do with the pickleball, which I do agree, because in the Cary Tennis Park, the pickleball, those used to be tennis courts. And now those pickleball courts there on those two courts on the outer side is used every time. So I, I agree that you got to separate them, but.
Yeah, and at least from what we see throughout the park systems in the area, you know, if people, they're in such high demand because there aren't as many. So people drive to other municipalities to use those where, where they're located, so.
Thank you.
Councilmember Robati, please.
Yeah, if, in fact, we can't get a dog park into this design, which I understand. I think that we have to commit as council to getting it into a design soon. You know, I think that we can only keep putting this off for so long. And honestly, it's the one thing that people have consistently asked me about, both on the campaign trail and as a council member. It comes up every time somebody finds out that I'm on the council. And I think it's just one of those cans that we keep kicking down the road because there are so many things that you can put in a park that people want. But people really do want a dog park. So, I mean, if we don't do it now, when are we going to do it? You know, we have to, I mean, we have to commit as a council to making this a priority because it's something that, that the citizens want. So, I mean, if we really can't get it in here, I get that. But, you know, the next time a couple acres freeze up, we really have to make that a priority.
Okay, I would just piggyback on that a little bit in that this last budget was challenging, but we. but we were, we didn't move that up. We actually let that slip a little bit. But that doesn't limit us. We don't have to wait till the next budget to do something about it. We have fund balance. We just have to be careful about how we allocate things. Sounds like staff is already looking for smaller parcels. If we can go to one of the slides that was actually a live picture, that showed the Kudrow parking lot. Yep, that one right there. If you look to the right, just above the blue line, there's some power lines and an unused area that I often see people with dogs. So, that would be a creative opportunity somewhere in town. We don't own that land, but if that's something that we could look into, that would be close enough to a park. If we could start looking at any open parcel, especially under power lines if possible, which aren't used for anything else, that would be an opportunity to make a dog park and essentially fence it. People are telling, telling us, go to Northwest Park and just put a fence up there. If we could do something creative in some areas of town when we're looking, that would be an opportunity to meet that need. So, I would just, if you see something like that, just let Parks and Rec know about it. Say, hey, could it work there? And we'll keep working on that. Unless there's any remote participants who want to add any more comments, I think everyone had a chance to talk about this. We will be discussing this further. What would be next steps? When do we hear from you again, Jerry?
Well, actually, from this point, CLH's design will move into construction drawings. Is that correct, Lauren?
Yes, we would move forward with our kind of design development level drawings. We'd start to put some more realistic to this, yes.
Yeah, so, you know, that's the purpose of the work session here, you know, is to look at this schematic design, and if there are any significant changes council would like to make, we, we really need to know that at this time. Because the further they get into construction drawings, if we come back and change anything, then they have to go back and redo work they've already done.
It sounds like phasing was discussed, but not really considered. So, it sounds like we want to do the whole thing at once. Sounds like we're generally in approval of the entire concept and the parts of it. You indicated you'll look into the basketball, the striping, things like that. Maybe bring us back some yeses or nos. That doesn't sound like something that's really about the construction. Since we dug into the stormwater a little bit more, it sounds like adding more grit paths doesn't really affect our stormwater. So, I'd be interested in knowing if we could do that little path down around the baseball field, down to the left, to the restrooms. Also, something up to the right, so you don't have to go all the way to the baseball field to enter this system of our new greenways, or gritways as they were. There was a stream that would have to cross, so that would be probably problematic, but if...
Are you referring to this area?
Yep. Instead of having to go all the way over to there, if you could cut the corner, for example, somehow.
You'd have a, you'd have another stream crossing, the buffer impacts associated with that, to, to be able to cross there. And that entire buffer, wherever we impacted, is currently tree conservation area, so we would have to get that taken care of.
That'd just be something that I'd like to see considered, just to have more connectivity if people maybe are gonna be walking there anyway, to make it a real path. Councilmember Fender.
I have one quick comment. Is it feasible to make the stormwater control measure into a wet pond, similar to, what's it, Church Street Park?
So, what we are looking at right now, this is basically sized to be a constructed wetland. As we further with the design, we needed to hear from council that, that, you know, basically this concept is approved. The next step for us is to get our geotechnical engineer on-site. They need to do some soil borings in order to determine what that could be. But the intent is, is that it is not just, it, it would be bio-retention or constructed wetland is basically what we would be looking at. Does that help? So, it would be planted, it wouldn't, you know? Wouldn't just be kind of a wet pond where it's holding a large amount of water. It would be one that it would kind of filter through. As a wetland, it would have pockets of water.
Okay, great. Thank you.
But it would totally plant.
Yes. It wouldn't look like the one at Church Street that's down the hill from the tennis courts, I guess is what I'm getting at. That holds water constantly.
You're saying it would not be like that?
No, that is not the intent currently, no.
And looking at that screen, I had one more thought. Where it says pickleball courts three, it, it wouldn't be too problematic to have a concrete pad there and a table tennis table for people to use while they're waiting. We don't have a table tennis table except for Northwest Park in the future. So, if that's not something that's problematic, I think that would be a nice little amenity for people who are waiting.
Okay. Somewhere out in this area, is that where you're?
Yeah, if there's any space over there. I know that's adding more pervious, but.
Yeah, we'll take a look at the grades. We're trying to tie back to shorten up the wall there, but we can extend that wall if it's, if we, if we need to, to kind of pull the grades in in order to get it flat.
Yeah, we'll have to look at that grading plan a little bit. But, yeah, as you said, that adds more impervious surface, but we'll see.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much, Jerry, and Lauren, for your hard work on this. We look forward to seeing those next construction drawings and moving this forward.
Well, as, as I mentioned, going forward, once they start the construction drawings, that, that will start the cemental process through the planning and, and engineering departments, and reviews through inspections and, and those departments. And so, there, you know, the next update for us would be, once those plans go through, we would come back with a construction cost estimate closer to the time of bidding the project. So, it could be several months before you would get another update.
Understood. Lots of work's being done behind the scenes. We are, we appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Okay. At this point, the remaining of our agenda is two closed sessions. Does staff have anything for the good of the order before we go into closed sessions? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion. Do we need one motion for the first closed session, or should we do both at once? Do the first one first? So, we're gonna go into closed session for economic development?
No, I'm saying you could, you can make one motion for both.
Okay, why don't we do that, then? And then, right after that, we're gonna take a 10-minute break after we go into our closed session, just so everyone's clear on the plan. Would someone like to take us into closed session?
Yeah. Pursuing to North Carolina Statute 143.31811A4, I move that we go into closed session for discussing an economic development matter. Following that, I move that we pursue into 143.31811A6, that we move into closed session for a personnel matter discussion, i.e., town manager evaluation.
I have a motion from Councilmember Rao. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Mayor Pro Tem Johnson, Eric Smith. Can you please do a roll call vote to go into closed session?
Councilmember Gary Hall?
Aye.
Councilmember Fender?
Aye.
Councilmember Robati?
Aye.
Councilmember Rao?
Aye. Sorry.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
Aye. I can't hear Eric very well.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Motion in for closed session, ask your name.
Okay, it is 9:15. We are in closed session.